Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. And at workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. The Agenda Packet is available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco.wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is being also televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Through Proclamation Number 20-28, Governor Inslee extended a directive making temporary changes to the Open Public Meeting Act. These virtual meetings will continue to be held until the OPMA restrictions are lifted. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions for items not on the agenda by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. And once again, continue to use our masks and our social distancing and our hand sanitizers. You know, we need to maintain good hygiene and continue to be safe. I'm pretty proud of where we're at today. We still have a lot of work to do. But maybe we can, and I'll share a little bit more later in the meeting about the amount of people that are being conscious and how many tested. We actually, I think it was a record that was met today. So with that said, that's the housekeeping. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Alvarado.
President.
Councilmember Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Milne. Councilmember Milne.
Mr. Milne, are you on the line? He might be muted. Well, we'll see if he comes online in just a little bit, so.
Councilmember Roach.
Present.
Councilmember Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Portembarajas.
Mayor Portembarajas is excused tonight.
And Mayor Martinez.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm here. All right. Thank you all for joining us tonight.
Hey, this is Councilmember Milne. My thing froze up. I am here.
Yep, that's what we thought. Thank you for responding, Councilmember Milne. So with that, can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that. So next, on our agenda tonight, we'll go to verbal reports from council members. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share tonight?
This is Councilmember Roach, and I just wanted to let everybody know they are welcome to attend the annual Visit Tri-Cities meeting, which is tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. I can forward to Councilmember or send to April Coell the invitation, but you can also find it on YouTube.
Wonderful. Thank you for that, Councilmember Roach. Anyone else?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to talk with, what was it, X Energy the other day. I was able to stand in for Mayor Martinez. It just was a community welcoming for a company who's looking at doing some, you know, next generation reactor technology. They've been awarded a grant for the Department of Energy. And they're looking at doing a pretty significant operation here. And the Tri-Cities may be home to the first ever reactor of this type, so, within the states. So talk about small modular reactors. So it's really interesting. There's a lot of good energy in the room. The community representatives that were there were certainly very supportive. Lot of hurdles. This is not going to happen in the near term. There's just too many regulatory issues that they're going to have to work through. But this could be a pretty significant thing for the Tri-Cities as a whole. And certainly emphasized the amazing things that Pasco brings to bear and what a wonderful city we have. So glad to have the opportunity. It went really well. Glad to be a part of that. Thank you.
And Councilmember Maloney, thank you very much once again for stepping in and attending that meeting. It was important to have a Pasco representation there, and you stepped up to the plate, so thank you very much for that. And again, you know, kind of piggybacking on what we just said, the Tri-Cities in general and Pasco, there's a lot of great things that we're hoping for. And this is a great place to be, and people and big businesses are investing in this area. So we continue and we want to continue to be a service-orienteded city and do the best we can to attend to our community members. So thank you very much for that. Anybody else? Okay, if not, then we'll move right along for the items of discussion. And tonight, the first one.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Alrighty, then. So I'll just continue. Hopefully, everybody can still hear me. Item 5A, Chihuana Park Shoreline Project. Let's see, who wants to kick that off? Mr. Ratkey?
It'll be me, sir. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Good evening. Zach Ratkai, Administrative and Community Services Director. So in early 2020, Futurewise and the Mid-Columbia Fisheries Enhancement Group approached the City of Pasco about co-locating a project on parkland adjacent to the Columbia River. Chihuana Park was chosen as the preferred location, and a subsequent onsite meeting was held in early March, obviously before gathering restrictions were put into place, with attendees from Futurewise, Mid-Columbia Fisheries, the City of Pasco, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and tribal representatives to explore this issue further. The Riparian Shoreline Project is a sponsored project, which will be explained in detail shortly by the applicants. In essence, Mid-Columbia Fisheries and Futurewise are looking for a host and a partner for this program. Since Pasco is a sub-lessee of the land on Chihuana Park, which is owned by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the group has asked that we, as the city, be the applicant with the Army Corps for a permit for the project and act as intermediary to pass their funding and application fee on to the Army Corps of Engineers. So this wouldn't have city funding come out of it. Other city involvement would circulate around providing access to the project for Mid-Columbia Fisheries, assistance with neighborhood notification, and some minor maintenance help, which we'll go into detail during the presentation. There is attached memorandum of understanding that will more formally identify each party's role, included with your staff report this evening. And I will need to unmute the applicants, but they will be here to give a, they are here virtually to give a brief presentation. So I will unmute Allison Cable from Futurewise and Merritt Mitchell from Mid-Columbia Fisheries. Okay, it looks like Merritt, you are unmuted.
I am, and thank you very much for that nice introduction, Zach. Allison apparently is having some difficulty getting her audio to work, so you may just be hearing from me this evening. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to allow Mid-Columbia Fisheries Enhancement Group and Futurewise to present information regarding a new project that we're super excited about partnering with the City of Pasco on. The Good Buffers Make Good Neighbors: Welcoming Salmon to Our Backyard Project is a collaborative partnership between a variety of local, state, and tribal partners who have come together to showcase how important it is to restore riparian habitat, which is just a fancy term for plants that like to grow along the shorelines with their feet wet. Tonight, we will provide a brief overview about who we are, the roles and expertise we bring to the project, and why we and our partners think this project is so important. Next slide. So first, a little bit of a background on Mid-Columbia Fisheries Enhancement Group. We are one of 14 regional fisheries enhancement groups in Washington State. We were chartered in 1990 when the legislature realized we were having issues with salmon in the state. We are an independent not-for-profit, which means we do all of our own fundraising, but we do, as a 501(c)(3) organization, but we do get a little bit of funding from the state of Washington through hunting and fishing licenses, through WDFW, or Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. We implement on-the-ground fish habitat enhancement projects. They can be large earth-moving projects that cost millions of dollars. We've done a lot of those in the upper reaches of the basin. But we also love to partner with landowners, small and large, to develop pretty, beautiful, and functional riparian habitat along the shorelines of streams and rivers in our basin. We have this wonderful relationship with all of our natural resources partners, so that brings a lot to the table. And we also have robust education and outreach initiatives that allow us to build stakeholder engagement for the long term. Next slide, please. So this is a complicated issue, and I'm really touching briefly on this because there's so much to know and so much we're learning on a daily basis, pretty much, about how do we recover salmon in the entire state of Washington. They are species that's fairly adaptable, and have historically been so, but they are running into some challenges that we just need to figure out how to fix. But we do know that salmon are critical for the lifestyle that we enjoy here in the Pacific Northwest. And if we didn't have salmon bringing back all these nutrients from the ocean, the forests that we, you know, love and are economically so dependent upon for their aesthetic value and their economic value, we wouldn't have them. So one of the issues is fish passage, and this can be as simple as blocking their way with a physical structure, but it can also include thermal barriers. And temperature has become a really big issue in rivers in the Pacific Northwest, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. I'm actually also going to highlight an example of this on a subsequent slide, a project right here in the Tri-Cities that some of you may know a little bit about, so I'm not going to reveal that quite yet, but we'll get there. So along with barriers, salmon need adequate clean, cold, flowing water. And again, I said it needs to be cold because these fish like about 55 degrees. And what we're seeing is significantly warmer water than that in both the Columbia and all of its tributaries. And this is statewide. It's not just the Columbia, but the Columbia seems like such a massive cold water source, and it is, but it's still warming up. So right in the Yakima Delta, we have a real critical pinch point. So during key migration periods in the summer, this often pushes that temperature in the Yakima and the Yakima Delta up to 90 degrees. And fish just can't tolerate that. It's too stressful for them. If you think about it, they've been migrating without eating to come back to spawn. They don't have a lot of resources. They also can get confused in that kind of temperature as well. And it also allows for all sorts of non-native fish that maybe some of you like to fish for, like bass and walleye and pike minnow. But they use it as an opportunity to, they sort of beat out the salmon in terms of reproduction and can eat them as the babies are swimming all the way out. So there's a lot going on. And then we have native birds that are predating on them as well. So they got a lot of challenges going on. But what we have learned is that there is a suite of actions that work in concert to create the right conditions for migrating salmon. And at the top of that list is planting shoreline plants that can clean and cool the water and provide the cover for migrating salmon and other native fish. Next slide. So I mentioned outreach, and I always love to show the faces of bright and shiny kids as they're out learning and having a good time and doing good. We have successfully partnered with schools and other community organizations with our Salmon in the Classroom program, Salmon Summit, which some of you may be familiar with. We work closely on that, and opportunities for kids and adults to go on field trips to practice science through scientific assessments and plantings and cleanup parties. And we see this type of community outreach is critical for building support for current and future stewardship of the natural world. Next slide, please. So I mentioned our outreach, I mean, excuse me, I, let me do this wrong. So I'm going to address an elephant in the room. Why are lawns a problem? Well, all that grass is a plant, right? You're talking about plants that need to grow by the shoreline. Well, here are some of the drawbacks. So grass is great, but it also doesn't protect the shoreline like native plants would with their deep roots and being able to really stabilize the shoreline and capture debris and capture any nutrients that are flowing off the surface there. So erosion's an issue. Flooding can be an issue. Toxic algae blooms can be an issue. And again, an increased temperature issue that we're already dealing with with regard to the fact that if you have vegetation that's overhanging the water, it's going to help cool it in that one particular area. Fish also like to hang out around the base of these roots and trees. Loss of wildlife habitat, loss of privacy. Next slide, please. So our goal is to enhance habitat for salmon. This does include, so ESA stands for Endangered Species Act species, so Mid-Columbia Steel header in our area and are challenged in that way. But we love working with willing landowners to help them fund these things. This is not that they are going to fund the ticket for this, but sometimes they'll help with that. But that to build these kinds of projects if they have available land. This is the project up in Ellensburg, I believe, that you're looking at here. But it allows us to convert these lawns, pastures, and agricultural fields into riparian habitat. And they're beautiful. I have a couple of pictures up here showing some of the kinds of flowering vegetation that we can have in a riparian zone. That's Lewis mock orange, that white color there, kind of looks like an orange blossom, and then the golden currant down below there. And then again, I talked about how fish utilize the roots and the overhang for shelter and such. Next slide. So through an effective partnership between regulators, irrigation interests, tribes, the fish folks, and tremendous amount of work has been done and has been accomplished over the last 10 years for salmon in the Yakima Basin. And why this slide? Well, I have my little bright red arrow there pointing at the location that we'd love to have you join us on with Chihuana Park, just across the river from this very large project that is now titled the Yakima River Delta 1135 Enhancement Project. And actually, this little yellow bubble should extend into the green space just beyond the 240 overpass there because the entire, once was the entire Yakima Delta is now part of this project area. So this is a U.S. Army Corps of Engineer project that is led by the Corps. They've determined that they have skin in the game as a result of filling the McNairy Pool in order to do some restoration here. And so they are leading a study right now to determine how best to restore flow and function to the delta. And again, we talked about those thermal issues, that backwater behind the Bateman Island causeway, which I can't show you, I don't think, with an arrow, but you can sort of see the discoloration between, oh, thank you very much. Where the, that gets so hot, it's full of water stargrass, which is growing out of control. We've got non-native species predating on fish. And again, it gives them one last way to get through there. So this is quite a community-led project that is moving forward. The round circles just above that on the river are two areas that are riparian restoration projects that we call thermal refugia projects. And these are designed to sort of capitalize on some cool water that's flowing there. That pin is actually a little too far up, but Amen Creek or Amen Waste Way discharges there, and its water is often eight degrees cooler than the main stem of Yakima, which is significant. And then just up above the 220 overpass is a wash dot, what we call an artisan feature. It is the bubble up that is sort of an area that is also pushing out a tremendous amount of cool water, apparently just capturing it from the ground. So there's a lot of sort of jumpstarting that's going on with regards to the Bateman Project, and we're hoping to see other kinds of these projects as we move along. Next slide, please. And one last thing I'd like to add to the past, the previous slide, is that we have got millions of dollars of investment in the upper Yakima River and that this Bateman Project is really a linchpin. So our partners on this project are diverse and significant players, both the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, those at the Corps. Both tribes are engaged. The Yumitala more than the Yakima, but the Yakima are following this. And then we have a lot of other local environmental and groups that are engaged in this process. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Allison. She is on the phone. I don't know if she can be unmuted or not. I don't even see.
She should be unmuted now.
Hey, Allison. Can you hear me?
Yay, there she is.
Thank you, Merritt. Can you go to the next slide, please? So Futurewise is the only nonprofit in the state that works on the implementation of the Growth Management Act. And our Tri-City program focuses very strongly on water quality and education around stormwater pollution prevention and the impacts that land use has on water quality. Do you go to the next slide, please? So Merritt and I do a lot of work in classrooms throughout the Tri-Cities and at community events, as Merritt mentioned. And we have a very equity-driven educational component. We want to link students and teachers to habitat and cultural history and make the curriculum that the teachers are teaching in classrooms, you know, very relevant and give us some place here in our community. And I also want to mention that we will be providing translation services at any of the events that we host as well as with our printed materials. Next slide, please. So how this partnership came to be is Merritt and I were doing a lot of education and realized that along with, you know, the classroom and the events that we go to, that there is a lot of opportunity to educate homeowners and individuals about how their behaviors, you know, impact water quality in our region and how we can be good stewards of the Columbia River. So we were successful in obtaining a grant from the Rose Foundation to install a riparian demonstration site in the Tri-Cities. And we were planning to do the planting in the fall this year. And working back from that, we would do a lot of outreach to the teachers that we've worked with in the past and, you know, host our own community events. But with all of the issues with COVID, we've decided to put that on hold, and we did receive an extension on the grant into the fall of 2021. Next slide, please. So we chose Chihuana Park because of the proximity, as Merritt mentioned, to some of the other riparian projects that are going on in our area, the accessibility and the visibility. The picture you see there is a meeting that we had last spring with some of our partners, city staff, and one of the cultural resource specialists, natural resource specialists from the Yumitala tribe. And when a red L goes there, showing us some of the native plants that are onsite and some of them that are edible. So that was a real treat that we got to see that. Can you go to the next slide, please? So as I mentioned, the timeline's extended. We will wait to do the outreach until spring and early summer next year. We have begun to do some of the planting and the design, or planting, sorry, ordering of the plants and designing of the site. But we will not be able to do the planting until fall of next year. Can you go to the next slide, please? So we are asking the city for some project support. We actually have the funding already for the project and the materials. We obviously have, you know, the expertise. We have done, we've had preliminary meetings with the Army Corps of Engineers. And, you know, they've approved and agreed with Chihuana being an ideal location. With Pasco being the least seen, they would need to be responsible for submitting the application on behalf of the project. But we would, you know, complete the application, and that would give us the necessary approvals to start the planting next fall. And they've also agreed to supplement the cost, subsidize the cost of the permit fees, which can be up to about $5,000. So we're not, you know, asking the city here any direct costs, but just some support in processing the application, also reviewing any materials or promotional information that goes out to the public. Also, we plant in the fall to try to take advantage of any moisture that's in the soil so that the plants can be established, but we may need to supplement that and ask the city for support in making sure that those plants get established. Next slide, please. So this last slide, I wanted to show you an example of a riparian buffer project. Our project will be a little bit different. We'll have different fencing and we'll have some interpretive signage that explains the significance of the site, both to the quality of the water and stabilizing the shoreline as well as the cultural and historical significance of the plants that we would choose. And so, you know, it can be very beautiful once it's established. And once it's established, it doesn't need a whole heck of a lot of maintenance, hopefully, but just getting the plants to take root will, you know, be the immediate issue. So if there's any questions about the project, we're happy to answer those today or through staff, however, you would like us to do that. And we appreciate being here, and thank you to the council and the staff.
Well, thank you for the presentation. It was very nice. Zach, could you go back on the presentation for the area in which this project is going to take place at Chihuana? It's not in front of any homes, is it?
No.
Okay, okay, good. And the only other question I had, Director Ratkai, is how will this affect your organization in a substantial way? Do you have the resources to be a partner in this?
Yeah, as it stands now with the resources requested in this planning stage of the project, we should be able to adequately serve both of our general maintenance needs for the park as well as assist in this organization establishing this demonstration project.
Perfect. And I also enjoyed the educational piece of it that you could utilize for our younger population, such as what the Port of Pasco came out with on our rivers, our life. It really is a great way to get our kids educated in how we can environmentally be safe and take care of our rivers and the wildlife that lives there. So, yeah, I think it's wonderful. Any comments from our council members or questions?
Is this Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. It's just good to see a little bit of diversity in some of the way that we'll be just creating some new environments or, I guess in this case, restoring some environment. I guess my question, I didn't really get a good sense of, was just the scope of this? Like what, how much would this cover or, yeah, I don't know if that, that's a bit about it, I didn't get a full sense of that.
Sure. Allison, do you want me to field that? So we're really talking about a demonstration piece. We had a couple of different locations that we decided. So if you're looking at the image here, the one that's the lower image, yep, right, that's the one that's sort of the preferred location. We know that we'll have to do some cultural assessment there as well just because of the cultural sensitivity of all of the shorelines in the Tri-Cities. But we're looking at about 100 feet deep, so from, you know, from parking lot down to shoreline, and then the length of it would be probably about 200 feet, so it's not huge. We're talking about doing some more decorative wood fencing that we call buck and rail. You'll often see this higher up, but it has to penetrate the ground to do it. But one of the things we're really trying to make sure that we do is have something that's a manageable size that is an opportunity to provide some of that education and that also is easily maintained so we can, you know, sort of continue that, the goal of having it be a really beautiful space. And with the idea that, hey, if everybody gets excited about this, that we'll see more and more of these kinds of projects. Because one of our goals, I didn't talk about it because we didn't have a heck of a lot of time, so I appreciate your questions, is that we're going to be targeting some of the shoreline homeowners to say, hey, we can support you doing this if it looks like something that's interesting to you, that you can have some of this shoreline protection, you can help with water quality and salmon, or other native species moving up and down the river, and they can be beautiful. And we have a brochure that we're going to be distributing and also translating into Spanish that talks about these backyard buffers, as we like to call it, or backyard shorelines kind of thing, and how you can... So we already have some of these materials already ready that we've used in other communities. So we're going to be targeting it and making it very specific for this community. And then I know Allison mentioned that we're really going to reach out to the walkable schools, the schools that are really close that can walk here. And then I think what's also unique about this project is that we're bringing in that cultural piece of what historically would have been here, how it was historically used, because a lot of these plants are native plants and they would have been used by the tribes. And so I think there's some interesting components here. We just really want it to be a showpiece for you all, and we're excited to see where this goes, so we appreciate the support.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the response. And yeah, I look forward to seeing the final product and see if that inspires any neighbors to kind of use that example for their, some of their projects. One of the things I really dislike in my home is the lawn. One of the things I really dislike in my home is the lawn, having to water it and having to... And so, you know, we've looked into different alternatives. I guess my follow-up question is for the city. Is there any kind of restrictions that folks have on, like, ripping off their lawn and doing more native plants and even some projects like this?
All right. Councilmember Alvarado, are you asking city staff?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I could certainly find the research to that question. I don't have that off the top of my head, and get back to you on that.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Well, any other comments?
Just Councilmember Sherrano, I just have a couple of thoughts and questions.
Yes. Yes, go ahead, Councilmembers Sherrano.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies, for your presentation. Couple of thoughts here. I believe I heard you say about 200 yards, or 200 feet in length and 100 feet in depth. In the event that cultural resources, I know you're going to work this issue, but something of major significance is found, do you foresee that being a showstopper? Or with your work with the tribes, kind of where are you? I mean, let's say something like another Kennewick man-type remains were found. That could be problematic. Have you thought through that process?
Allison, you want me to take this? Yeah, I can take this one.
Oh, go ahead.
So, yes, we may need to stop the project if something sensitive was found in this location. And we know that all along the shoreline in our region is, you know, considered sensitive, which is, you know, part of the reason that we've had some preliminary discussions with the tribes and with the Army Corps. But of course, you know, we would get all of the necessary permissions, and they would also have oversight. So part of the permit process would be to establish what oversight we would need to have, and to cover the cost of any onsite, you know, archaeologists or cultural consultation. So there is a possibility that we would have to, you know, halt work, but it would be handled and dealt with through all of the appropriate channels. And also, you know, we've had preliminary discussions, but that doesn't mean that we still don't have to go through, you know, all of the appropriate processes and get approval.
Right, and I appreciate that. And I think that kind of leaves a tangential or secondary question, which is, in the event that those, that oversight becomes post-prohibitive, would you then seek to amend the agreement with the city and request fee sharing? Or is that something that you've thought through as far as going back to the Rose Foundation's seeking secondary funding? Or how would you? I mean, I know that's kind of where a lot of the cost can be incurred, right there, is that oversight and those sorts of things. So I guess what I'm asking is, is the city potentially looking at some surprise costs that aren't baked in? Or maybe, if there are those potential costs, we need to consider tightening up the language of the memorandum of understanding? I'll throw that out there.
Yeah, we would be happy to make, you know, if we need to make the wording more strong in terms of that we are, you know, not asking the city for any financial contribution towards the permits or the oversight of the project. And, you know, we would be bearing the cost of any permitting or any materials or anything that's, you know, that's associated with the site.
Okay, thank you very much. And I heard a comment about you have a brochure that you could lead. I certainly would appreciate, I guess, either we'd have to get it electronically or, you know, delivered through the city mail system. But I'd love to see, love to see, you know, kind of how you dine your efforts and your partnership, because it's something that could be captured really well, that would be beneficial to the community, the city, and to both your organization. So I appreciate your effort. Just thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sherrano. And those of you who are answering the questions, I really appreciate it. So with that said, if there's no further questions...
Mr. Mayor, I...
Oh, yes, Councilmember Maloney, go ahead.
So just real quick, the only question I had was related to the tribal consultations. I saw that the Confederated Tribe of the Colville Reservation was not on that list of partners. They've certainly shown a large interest and have made a sizable property purchase via Pasco, and are certainly interested in re-establishing a presence here locally. Is that something that you could consider reaching out to them as well? And ensure that they're brought into this project in terms of an advisory role?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You know, the Yumitilla have really come forward with offering just advice and sort of reviewing the types of plants and things that we're ordering. But we are happy to reach out directly to the Colville as well. I do think, Merritt, you can probably help me clarify this, but the permit process that we would go through would also contact all of the related tribes to get their, you know, or impacted tribes. But we can make sure certainly that we're keeping them in the loop if it's not already inherent in the permit process.
It is, and I do know that we have been provided, through the Yumitilla, the cultural contacts for the Colville, the Nez Perce, and certainly I've been in conversation with John Schellenberger of the Yakima Nation. We work a lot with the Yakima Nation, Mid-Columbia does. So that process, we know that the Corps goes through that process. And again, the Yumitilla have been sort of very forthright in telling us, you know, making sure that we are reaching out to everybody. I think they see that as critical through this process. So, great question, and we will certainly make sure that happens.
I appreciate that. They've shown a lot of interest in becoming a growing partnership with the local community, and the city has, I think we've expressed our welcoming of them as a partner in our community. So just wanted to make sure to put that out there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, with that, Director Ratkai, if you could take those comments of council into consideration? Will this be coming to the next meeting for some type of approval, or...?
Yeah, in accordance with council's wishes, we'll strengthen some of the language on the, as directed. And then we'll try to get it in by the deadline for the next meeting, if not certainly before the end of the year.
Perfect.
We appreciate the discussion this evening.
All right, thank you. And thank you for the presentation once again. And thank you for joining us tonight. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. We're very excited about the interest and partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we'll move along to the next item on the agenda, and that is the ordinance to amend PMC 6.05.010, definitions of potentially dangerous animals, Director Ratkai.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. A good evening once again, Zach Ratkai, ACS Director. So the item before you this evening is a discussion piece on the potential ordinance to amend Chapter 6.05 of the Pasco Municipal Code, which would entail, which through the amendment would exclude dog breed-specific language within the definition of a, what's called a potentially dangerous animal. As discussed previously at the October 26 workshop, the council is asked to seek input and have a discussion on potentially amending this ordinance. So this evening presents the opportunity for this discussion. Additional information that was requested specifically by council was around dog breed, or excuse me, dog bite frequency and dog bite cases we've seen in the city of Pasco, and the statistics if they were kept historically and kept by breed category. Also, that if there was any information out there from other cities about the frequency of dog bites after those cities chose to remove breed-specific language from their ordinance. From the information gathered over the course of seven years of dog bite case history at the city of Pasco, there was an average of, you know, around 25 total dog bites each year, where breeds that were associated with each bite case, when they were identified, a lot of them were unidentified breeds. Any breed that was listed in our ordinance as potentially dangerous accounted for about an average of three of those cases per year. The data on hand was on, over the course of time, where we did have our current code with the breed-specific language in place. So I wanted to make sure that council was aware of that. The additional data as requested by the city council was information on how cities have fared after they've lifted breed-specific legislation. The data on this that we found and staff researched was pretty scant. Much of the research and information pertained a lot to just the simple elimination of breed-specific language or counterarguments to that. But really, there was very few, little to no follow-ups on how communities around the country have fared since removing these codes. This could be based on many factors. With the removal of breed-specific language being somewhat of a newer trend in the United States, or at least actions thereof, there may not be enough post-removal data, as I term that, to really compile some statistically sound information. So the information that we had looked for, we really did not find out in the world. So as you know, and as we've talked about before, Pasco has breeds specifically defined as potentially dangerous within its code, but allows for those breeds to take a good canine citizen test, to be licensed for residency within the city limits. Most recently, council enacted a minor revision to the aforementioned Pasco Municipal Code sections as a matter of consistency to conform with the revised code of Washington. This was done on November 25 of last year, in 2019. In short, that aforementioned amendment provided an additional alternative means by which pet owners of potentially dangerous breeds can test their animals in order to meet eligibility requirements for licensing and residency. So to initiate the policy discussion, staffs prepared for council's consideration a very, a draft example amended ordinance, which removes language specifying individual dog breeds within the definition of potentially dangerous animals. This is more specifically referenced within Section 6.05.010, definition of terms, under this title of the municipal code. This amendment retains provisions pertaining to the enforcement of potentially dangerous animals and associated penalties. The amendment is focused on the removal of any reference to specific breeds within the ordinance. And you have an example with your staff report this evening. So staff wanted to add that with the long history surrounding the appropriateness of breed-specific language, it's been considered multiple times by city council, resulting in the language being retained. While the existence of breed-specific languages has been clearly demonstrated as being controversial among community members that have provided output or input to city council last November, and obviously numerous instances of correspondence since that time, there are likely community members out there that are relying on continuation of the breed-specific language within the code. During the most recent city council discussion on the issue, some members were clear that they are ready to consider the code amendment presently. Staff would appreciate if there's any additional direction or information that council would need. This evening through discussion, we'd be more than happy to provide that. If there's additional public information that needs to be gathered as well, we are here for discussion and direction from this council. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Director Ratkai. So council, any questions or comments? Any thoughts on the language that is presented tonight? Or any thoughts, for that matter, on this particular topic?
This is Councilmember Alvarado. I have a related question.
Go ahead, Miss Councilmember.
Not directly to the language here. So, you know, I remember talking with Past Mayor Watkins, and him saying, we didn't have a dog problem, dangerous dog problem. We had a dog owner problem. And so I think that that certainly was the case when this was created. I always think about, you know, why certain fences where they are? Are they because of a problem, or couldn't they be removed? And if they're removed, will that create the problems? That would say, okay, this is why we put this in the first place. So I think it's certainly a pretty sensitive topic. But I'm wondering, I'm just, I guess, just to be clear though, I am for the removal of the breed-specific language. I don't, you know, there's certainly enough evidence for me to know that it really is about a dog owner situation, not specifically to the dogs. I think this creates a situation where this breed becomes a lot more difficult to adopt because of the barriers. But I think, my question really is, are we, do we have the ability from a city of Pasco PMC to penalize more severely dog owners who are bad dog owners, who either are fighting their dogs or who are racing them in a way that become dangerous animals? I don't know if there's any kind of additional restrictions we can put, but that's really my question.
Would that, I don't know, Mr. Zabel? I don't know if that would be more of a legal question?
Yeah, if Mr. Ferguson or Mr. Briggs are on the line, city attorney's office.
Right, so I can take a look specifically back through our PMC and our criminal section, but the, so the change that would be made with regard to the PMC as drafted, as Mr. Ratkai had pointed out, would simply just be to remove the per se language. So, you know, there wouldn't be any breed-specific delineation that identifies a pit bull as a potentially dangerous animal. As far as to the council members' question whether there's something that we could do with regard to, you know, the specific owners, I think, as a first step, yes, there is, because we can, we can still, in the event that we have a problematic dog owner, we can still define that dog as potentially dangerous or dangerous if it fits within the confines of the redrafted ordinance. And there's consequences that come along with that and failure to comply with that. So as far as whether or not that's a criminal penalty, I'd have to look back through the PMC, but I know that it's common that in fact, that those do become criminal matters at a certain point. So, but I can certainly get back to Councilmember Alvarado tomorrow with a definitive answer in form of, you know, whether or not that penalty would be civil in nature and simply be a fine, or whether or not there could be more serious consequences for that specific owner. But certainly, this doesn't take away the power that the city would have currently with regard to, you know, labeling a specific dog potentially dangerous or dangerous, given its history, which as the council member pointed out, in many instances is tied to the oversight that the owner provides or fails to provide in a lot of these instances. So that's still there, that, those teeth are still there in that provision. We're simply just removing that per se definition that says, by definition, this breed is a potentially dangerous animal. So I don't know if that helps the council member out, but certainly I'll follow up, give them a more detailed answer tomorrow.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I think that that's really, for me, where it lands. It's about the owners who are neglectful or actually train their dogs to be dangerous animals. And so I'd certainly be interested in that information and how we can provide a little bit more security for our community that way.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Anyone else?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'd like to listen to Mr. Alvarado's statements that I think it'd be interesting to see whether we have the right rules in place to help ensure that our dog owners are being responsible and are not creating dangerous situations by, through neglect or abuse of some sort. I, you know, I've thought about this a lot since I got on council. I've heard about it a lot from friends and from the community. And it's, it's pretty, it's obviously the sentiments there. But I've also spent a lot of time doing personal research and asking the same sort of questions of, what can we do? Does this make sense? And what I've ultimately come down to is that I haven't found compelling evidence that we can definitively identify a pit bull by the look of it. And that's been something that's been pretty consistent from the evidence I've found and testimony from, you know, people who specialize in exactly this sort of work. So at the end of the day, I understand we can have this law. We do. There's nothing illegal about it. That's been confirmed through the change in Washington state law, reiterating the fact that this is something that cities can do. However, I just, I think it's, I think certainly that it's somewhat difficult to consider whether or not we can actually identify as a city which animals fall under this. So if that, if nothing else, is a, I think, a good reason to strike the breed-specific language, but continue to have, you know, penalties and rules for potentially dangerous animals as defined through their behavior, and certainly look into whether or not we need to and we can strengthen the laws about, well, frankly... And certainly look into whether or not we need to and we can strengthen the laws about, well, frankly, bad owners. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Good point. Anyone else wanna provide a comment or ask any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Serrano. Um, I think I'm gonna kind of pull the same line of string that the two councilmen have spoken to you before me, which is. Um, I'm concerned about the owners, not so much the dogs themselves typically, because, you know, I mean. Just with my own experience, my kids, we've all been bitten by little dogs. Now, they inflict less harm, no question. Uh, you know, I've I've been bitten also by a pit mix and that caused much much more substantial harm. So my question is, and I don't recall seeing this, and forgive me if it's there. Do we have a three, five, one-year track record of dog bites and damage correlation within the city of Pasco? Was that provided to us?
Director Redkay? Uh, yes, uh, uh, Councilman Serrano, that was a seven-year track of uh average cases was provided. Uh, average twenty-five dog bites a year. Um, three, an average of three over that seven-year period, uh, three of those bite cases involving uh a pit bull or a breed. Specifically listed as potentially dangerous, so. Um, that's the track record that I have. I can, you know, we don't, didn't produce that in writing. We didn't have that uh available at the time of publication of the staff report, but we can certainly get that to you.
Okay, no, I I had heard you you mentioned that earlier. I just, I wanna make sure I didn't miss something, you know, uh else in addition that was provided right. You guys didn't happen to look at the level of damages or anything, you know, um incurred by breed or or anything of that nature, did you? Director Radke?
Uh, no, the information that was provided to us basically had, you know, dog bite case and. What the breed of the animal was, if it was uh identified, um whether, you know, the date of the occurrence, whether the occurrence was um. Uh, closed and resolved at that time, but nothing as far as the severity um or whether it was a criminal or civil case. It was just dog bite, dog breed.
Okay, I I greatly appreciate that, and I think um, you know, it sounds like a lot of us kind of lean both ways on this one. Um, I think there's, there's value in allowing people to own dogs that are identified as some as uh. I mean, some in the community as dangerous and identified by others as a totally loving breed and loyal breed. Um, some of my very close friends have these breeds and and I would never be terrified of their dogs. Um, that's just my anecdotal evidence. Um, I also understand that some people have, they're terrified of these dogs too, so we need to figure out where the right line is. Um, I would be interested too in in hearing more from the city attorney's office as far as. What type of prosecution we may have, um, and whether or not there's like an escalation or sliding scale cause. Uh, or sorry, sliding scale of of damages. You know, where it's, it may be a misdemeanor in one case, so I mean, I suggest we probably wouldn't wanna push it to. Or wouldn't have the ability to push it to a felony or anything like that. But to the point, you you know, is there a sliding scale that's punitive if damage is caused, it's greater or less? Um, so I'd be interested in that. Um, and so I I I appreciate the work that's gone into this so far. Um, again, I personally, where I am, I sit on the fence. Um, I I've got my anecdotal evidence that it says we should let everyone own the dog they want, but there's also concerns with that too. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Anyone else before I take my turn? Okay, then, uh, with that said, uh, I just wanna share that, uh, in my, in my opinion, in talking to many dog owners and um. And people who have had experiences with dogs, that there is, a- as as the rest of the council has already brought up, there's no question that. Um, the owners are the ones responsible and should be responsible for maintaining. Uh, the safety of others when they have any kind of animal. And it's pretty evident that, you know, there's many, many people who have actually wild animals. That have never hurt anybody because they're being responsible and taking care of those animals and ensuring that they're. Um, uh, in in a place where they're not gonna do damage to anybody. Uh, but unfortunately, we always seem to have those situations such as in Moses Lake here about a month or two ago. Where um an animal uh killed its its owner and seriously hurt uh the the spouse. Um, I've seen and I know some people personally that were uh were hurt very badly from. From dogs, but not necessarily pit bulls. So um, so yes, it's, I think it's really evident uh that the the ownership and I would. Um, I would ask council to please bring up some more specific information on what those penalties are and where the limitations are. And number two is, uh, our legal counsel, um. Are are we putting the city in a liability by by changing this ordinance? Um, could you, do you have an answer now, or would you like to bring that back later of how much liability we have? Uh, or is it just one of those cases where if the city was uh to be accused, then the chances are not very likely that we would be responsible? Uh, how do you see that, council?
Yeah, I think the uh risk related, the, you know, legal liability for the city is relatively low. Um, you know, I think essentially that the argument that would have to be made was that, you know, some kind of a state-created danger-type doctrine. Uh, but again, I, you know, the the city would have to be, you know, aware that by, you know, removing this code. There's going to be some certain type of harm or specific party and and that's just not the case. Um, it's too speculative at this point. Um, um, for the reasons that have been pointed out, I mean, there's just not, uh, and and in many instances, there's. Um, there's, there's just simply not a duty uh on the part of uh the government to protect uh private individuals. Um, and there's a famous case of a uh uh Castle Rock V Gonzalez that kind of um solidified that point. But so I think that, you know, the risk of of liability um is low for the city, whether or not this. Uh, ordinance remains as written or or is modified to remove the breed specific language. I think it's a a low, low legal risk for the city.
Okay, thank you for that, council. Uh, so that's kind of where I'm at, and um I I'm just terrified because uh, to be honest with you, because I. I know there's a lot of responsible owners who just, it only takes one time for your pet to get out, uh, when you're not home. Whatever the case may be, and uh and really do some harmful damage to the neighboring. Uh, kids if you live in a, in a neighborhood with kids and it really is. Horrifying for me to think about that at the same time. And and the other thing is, perhaps we don't have. Uh, perhaps we don't have much of a problem here because we've had this ordinance uh in, but. Uh, along with um with asking for a little bit more specific information on um how we can make the owners more responsible. Is there any way? Well, I don't know if this is possible, but I was gonna say, you know, I know at the animal shelter, when they give an animal away. I hope they do some extensive research on who they're giving the animal away to, to ensure the safety of the animal and to ensure that. Uh, any aggressive dog regardless of the breed would uh would go to the right, you know, a good owner. So I would like, I would like to see that happen if it could, but other than that, um, that's my comments. I'd, I'd, I think we'll, we would like to see a little bit more information of what we just discussed from council, and then we can go from there. Uh, because we're in no hurry to change this, but is there a deadline that we have to meet for this?
Just councils, just councils deadline.
Okay. Okay, so with that, those are my comments. Um. So is that enough information that I think you've provided, Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, just just a couple, uh, I guess, one, an observation, and then, you know, uh, reconfirm what I'm hearing. So uh, we did talk about uh bite information that we had locally, our seven-year track that uh Director Radke mentioned. And uh, Mayor, I think you touched on it a minute ago, is those numbers are probably somewhat skewed in that. Because of the ordinance that's been in place, the seven-year track probably has an underrepresentation of of uh this particular breed, pit bull breed. Uh, because of the difficulties of of uh owning one and the the steps that uh that have to occur. Particularly prior to the changes council made in twenty nineteen. Uh, twenty nineteen, there was only one way to uh demonstrate uh pet good citizenship. Or whatever that terminology is, right? And uh, uh, that that was broadened a bit by the state legislature in twenty nineteen. Going forward, uh, what I'm hearing is um some research by our uh city attorney's office on. Uh, accountability of owners and what level of focus we can put there. And uh, and what steps we might be able to take to to sure assure the public uh the safety of any animal. And uh, and strengthen uh, strengthen that language. And then uh, uh, Mayor, you brought up a good point, I think, on the measures that the shelter takes. To uh evaluate uh any animal uh that it puts up for adoption to determinate, to determine uh. Uh, its level of aggressiveness and and ability to to be safe. And I I know they do do that. I do not know what steps they take, so we can get a better handle on what that looks like and bring that back to council as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Zabel.
So this, this is Councilmember Maloney.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
To be very, to be very specific and clarify my earlier statements, I see, I see that my request is being separate from the action at hand. I support putting forward the uh the uh proposed resolution um to evoke uh this this calendar year, and I don't wanna put it off any further. Um, separately, I'm interested in understanding if we can strengthen the um the penalties for, again, um, bad owners, so to speak. So um, and I I could speak certainly to, my my kids had adopted two guinea pigs a couple of years ago. And the amount of rigor, the fact that they actually called three of our background checks, it was more difficult than a than a job background check as far as I could tell. Just for the sake of of adopting two abandoned uh guinea pigs. So I'm positive that our animal shelter is doing a good job on that. But I'm, I'm interested in moving this forward quickly, and I'm not, I I don't think there's any more information I need to be able to make a decision on. On removing the breed specific language, so I'm not sure how the rest of council feels on that, but I just wanted to make sure that I was very clear on my statement as opposed to uh. Because it might have sounded a little wishy-washy as I was saying it, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Maloney, and and appreciate your your comment, and we'll take it. Um, but I am, I am concerned of uh and seeing if if there's any. Any other measures we can take as far as making response uh owners responsible, but other than that. Um, once we get that some information on that, then I'll be ready to make a decision on that as well.
Well, just by way of an example, so the city of Kennewick does, under their uh potentially dangerous code. Um, they do criminalize failure to comply with that permitting requirement with regard to a a an animal that has been um. Declared potentially dangerous. Um, so, you know, there are instances even here locally where um that's dealt with as a criminal matter. And so I think, you know, for the council, it'll be um, you know, really a question of. Uh, whether uh we wanna maybe treat this as kind of like a building-type offense where maybe initially it's a civil. Uh, matter, and then if there's uh issues with um continued uh non-compliance, then maybe at that point. It progresses into um into the criminal uh realm. And Kennewick does make it that offense a gross misdemeanor, which should be punishable by a a year in jail and a five thousand dollar fine.
And so I'm hearing that that would be the same in our case, and that's where it's at today?
We we, well, as it stands now, I don't know, I don't believe that our PMC has any criminal aspect to it, so. And I would, I would have to look back further into it to see whether or not there's uh civil penalties are associated with it. But um, at least with regard to the city of Kennewick, and I think the city of Richland may be similar in the way that they treat these uh these offenses. They do treat them as um a- as criminal matters uh with regard to a um specific uh animal owner. Who uh fails to to uh comply with the um, the permitting re- requirements with regard to a uh potentially dangerous animal.
Okay, cuz cuz I would be in favor of making it at least that, uh, that criminal offense in the event that. Um, they would harm uh somebody. Um, and I just wanna ensure, for me, though, that would be dependent on, to vote for this would be dependent on on that. So um, is that something you need a little bit more time to to bring back, or are you telling me that that's?
No, I think it, I I think that's, that would be a course of action that the city could take, certainly would be within its police power.
That that the city could take, but would it have to be written or?
Yeah, I think, uh, uh, again, and and um, I don't believe at this point that our code does t- treat it that way, so it would take some further code amendments.
Well, I would.
To to get that uh.
That's where I would like to go with it. Uh, how how's the rest of the council feel with that?
This is uh Councilmember Alvarado. I think if we would have some good safeguards that could uh complement this. I think that it would be worth it to wait a couple of weeks. I wouldn't want, want this to be a year-long process. But if, and we can have some great examples in some cities that do it well, that have uh. Um, you know, that that ha- have some good examples of how they can use their police power. I think that that would be worth it to make sure that we have um both sides of the coin, I guess, addressed.
Thank you, Councilmember. So I hear, I hear two councils that are uh willing to to wait to get, to make sure that we have wording in there that for, that makes it a criminal offense. Is any, anybody else?
This is Serrano. I'll support that.
Thank you.
This is Councilmember Maloney. I'll, I'll support that if we can um complete it by this year. Otherwise, um, I'm okay with this breaking into two actions so we can get something done, and then we can fi- finish up the r- wrap up next year if need be.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Roach, I'm on the same page as uh Councilmember Maloney is that. I I think that we should uh be respectful of of our community members' time and effort. And get back to them in a timely manner, so I wanna see this before the end of twenty twenty. Um, uh, I wanna, I would personally like our council to weigh in on this in an official manner.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Roach. So just.
I I would mention that uh com- completing this prior to the end of the year gives us a little bit uh more clarity on the licensing issue too. Because if we, if we wait too long, then we're into a new licensing cycle uh for those dogs that expire in January.
Okay.
And uh, so it'd sort of complicate things for those owners, so if we can finish this, I. Sounds like from the city attorney's uh office, we can be back to council in two weeks. Uh, with some options along the line of uh owner responsibility as well. Uh, I think we, from the discussion got tonight, this is more than a binary decision. It's a, you know, perhaps there's a uh one A uh option. And uh, we can talk about that in two weeks and still be able to have plenty of time to act before the end of the year.
Perfect. All right, thank you for that. And thank you for uh, for your comments and uh and concerns, council, and Director Radke, I thank you for that. All right, next we'll move to the next one, and uh we are gonna talk about the proposed two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two biannual, biannual operating budget. Manager Zabel.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council, and it's a pleasure to be able to present to you tonight uh the twenty-one uh twenty-two biennial budget. And uh, hopefully you were presented uh, or at least delivered that earlier uh, or late last week and had the opportunity to look at it uh over the weekend. So we're gonna kind of hit the highlights tonight. Uh, I wanna emphasize uh the term preliminary budget. Uh, anyone reviewing this document can see there's a lot of work that went into it. Uh, but I wanna assure council and members of the public that wanna provide input. Uh, they're certainly an opportunity to to influence what's in this budget. Uh, so don't, don't be fooled by the fact that uh numbers are all set. That that's a responsibility we have is to get council. Uh, as staff and ultimately my responsibility as city manager to get council uh a budget proposal uh for their review. So our system of government now requires uh uh council's review as a legislative body. And uh, um, that said though, um, I wanna note the preliminary budget. Uh, is not necessarily staff-driven, uh, regardless of how it might look with all the numbers done. Uh, but it is a process-driven. And what I, what do I mean by that is uh the docu- document represents a lot of work already done by council. Uh, and the public and staff that started back uh as early as last fall with the National Citizen Survey. Uh, twenty twenty, uh, I think all of us recognize has been a challenge and continues to be so. In many ways, including the preparation of this budget, but uh the gen- genesis of the budget proposal before you stems from. Numerous efforts by uh by the council, uh boards and commissions, policy decisions of the council. Uh, current and uh current budget experience, uh, as well as um. Staff's own initiatives, which were discussed with council during the um goal-setting process. staff's own initiatives, which were discussed with council during the um, goal-setting process. So the goal-setting process obviously is a big driver of this budget, as is uh, the public input uh, processes. I mentioned the National Community Survey already. Uh, we also had a number of uh, public listening sessions. Uh, thankfully, we were able to get uh, through all three of those prior to the COVID uh, shutdown. Uh, implementation of the CIP, we've certainly done that virtually, but council was able to uh, earlier this summer, back in July, consider this, the capital improvement plan. Uh, the first couple of years of that, you'll see pretty, pretty familiar, you'll see that in the biennial budget. Uh, at least in, as far as uh, grants materialize or other resources materialize. Uh, evolution of council priorities over the current budget cycle, uh, the council's legislative priorities, uh, you'll see in some ways reflected in here. Ongoing council discussions over just a broad range of topics as, as we go through the year, and we evaluate things and we hear from the public and we uh, listen to and take note of council policy decisions. Those are part of the process, really, of doing the budget and trying to prepare something that uh, imposes uh, the direction council, council wishes to take the city uh, through its budget resources. Our boards and commission uh, have all had uh, opportunities to input. Parks and Rec Board certainly have talked about uh, a number of the capital projects. Uh, planning commissions played a big role, and you'll see that in a number of studies that are in the budget and uh, and other initiatives that uh, such as development standards and so forth, that uh, will shape the, the future. Arts and Culture and our IDEC, uh, Inclusion Diversity and Equity Committee, uh, all, all have uh, shaped in some form or fashion uh, this budget. Uh, the urban growth boundary decision shapes the budget and um, uh, decisions on public art. Uh, and public art incorporated even into some of our capital improvement projects, and uh, I do, I do want to take a second to recognize also the finance director's efforts uh, with these past few years in keeping council updated with uh, monthly with the general fund update and quarterly on all major funds uh, over the last year or two. I think that's, those have been instrumental in helping council really get a sense of resources and how they track. And uh, and I think has, has aided council on some of their own uh, policy uh, decisions. So over four hundred and sixty-two million dollars in this budget. Uh, not all of its spending, some of it's uh, strategic uh, about ninety-two million, about strategic um, fund reserves. A number of items, uh, in the municipal budget I will share with you, and we go through the process every two years now, uh, are very predictable. Property taxes are pretty predictable, and utility taxes, not as predictable, but, but pretty solid. Um, cost of labor, uh, when, when our contracts are current, that's fairly easy to predict. Uh, our debt service responsibilities, and those make up a big chunk of our budget. Other items can be pretty volatile, and I think uh, this last year, this, actually this current year has demonstrated that more than any year. Most of us, I think, have, have seen in the municipal budget uh, in our career. Sales tax, we've seen bouncing around all over the place, uh. You know, thankfully, we have a strong underlying economy that's uh, uh, in our region, that's that's put us in a pretty good position, although it didn't look so back in July. If we'd had to put this bu- budget together, uh, Finance Director observed today, if we'd had to put this budget together back in July, it would have been a much different budget. Just because the knowns were so much greater than, and uh, and the impacts, uh, really difficult to predict. Uh, but we're, we're coming through fairly strongly. Gambling taxes uh, went off a cliff, you know, and that's a million-dollar revenue for the city, but gambling in the city has opened back up, uh, and uh, it's, it's uh, not, not at uh, its pre-COVID levels, but we're starting to see some uh, gain back in that uh, particular revenue stream. Uh, oper- operational impacts of snow and ice, we don't know what that's gonna look like. We might have snow tonight. We might spend a hundred thousand dollars before the end of the year at snow and ice, or we might spend four hundred thousand dollars before. So tho- those are some of the volatile things uh, that are in the budget. And of course, uh, all this uh, while we're in the midst of a worldwide pandemic. So more on some of that a little later th- in the discussion. Uh, all this to say that uh, you know, a budget's really a plan based on what we know and can reasonably foresee at the time it's presented and adopted. So you'll note uh, this proposal, some degree of caution. Uh, and this is a result of the uncertainties we're facing uh, globally and nationally and locally. The new positions are few, uh, and spending increases are in step with an organization that has accomplished uh, quite a bit over the last several years, uh, perhaps maybe is in need of absorbing uh, the impacts of some of the changes. We've we're just coming off of uh, uh, our SAFER grants, uh, where we, that had funded uh, in, in large part over the last uh, three years, six firefighters, and uh, our cops grant, which in large part funded uh, four police officers, and so now we're observing the full, excuse me, observ- absorbing the full cost of of those employees in this budget, which is a bit of a hit. Uh, we've experienced some uh, volatil- volatility uh, where we have not in the past, which, you know, gives you a little bit of a uh, pause for concern, and while we're in a strong fina- financial position, uh, I think we all have to realize that uh, COVID nineteen and its impacts are far from over. We're seeing numbers starting to shoot up across the country again, even locally. Uh, I think Pasco's faring well, the region's faring well. Yeah, a lot of, because of the efforts of uh, of our elected officials uh, regionally and, and at the state level. That said, um, there's, there's a number of items in here you see very consistent with uh, council goals. Uh, long-range pl- long-range planning efforts, uh, budgeted, which will either be completed in the first two quarters of the biennium, that will likely drive uh, mid-biennial budget adjustment recommendations associated with staffing and facilities. So, and what I, what I mean by that is uh, council recalls in your, in your uh, in your um, budget presenter, or excuse me, in your, your uh, council goals. Uh, one of the council goals, for instance, is a strategic master plan for the police department to guide its growth uh, over, over the next five-to-ten-year outlook, as the city's looking at some pretty significant population increases during that time. Uh, no, undoubtedly, that's gonna demonstrate uh, uh, the need for additional staffing. Uh, the chief and I had discussed additional staffing uh, at the onset of the budgeting process, and because we're you know, his, his, his department's going to be engaging upon a uh, strategic master plan, we, we thought, you know, let's, let's get through that plan, so we can do this strategically rather than than uh, implement what we, what we think we need, and then find out maybe there's a higher priority once we're through the plan. Similarly with fire, fires can be doing a, a maintenance and improvement plan that's associated with the uh, Washington State Ratings Bor- Board uh, Fire Protection Rating. And that in large part is going to be evaluating the timing of future stations and staffing alternatives. So you'll, we're gonna, within the next several months, we're gonna see some information along those lines. Uh, certainly that aligns with council's goal of uh, uh, long-term goal of maintaining the three rating that we were able to achieve, yeah, in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, number of utility plan updates, we have a water comp plan update, uh, you've heard the Butterfield uh, Water Treatment Plant Facility Plan. Uh, we have a Parks and Recreation Facility Plan that uh, part of that process is gonna be an evaluation of all of our parks facilities and uh, their conditions uh, spatially, uh, amenity-wise, uh, across uh, our neighborhoods uh, in our city, and a community centers evaluation as well. Uh, councils, we had some discussion uh, just recently about the MLK Center and the need for improvements there, and, and council uh, adopted that as part of your legislative agenda, and then, of course, we've had the, the uh, center that we've looked at um, for the past several years, uh, locating uh, farther to the west, some, somewhere west of three ninety-five. All, all of those uh, would have staff implications as well. And then financially, just a few uh, facts, I think, to keep in mind, and I, I think this uh, uh, speaks to the speaks to the uh, my, conservativeness, I think, of this uh, budget proposal. Uh, so that, as I mentioned before, about four hundred and sixty-two, almost four hundred and sixty-three million dollars. That represents about a twelve million dollar increase uh, from the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty biennial budget, uh, four hundred and fifty. So about two-point-seven percent. Uh, this budget's balanced uh, with incoming revenues and planned use of fund balance. Uh, the proposed general fund budget's one hundred and, one hundred and nine million dollars, uh, an increase of about nine-point-one million, or eight-point-three percent, which is a pretty significant increase from the uh, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget of one hundred million. So tonight, we're gonna touch on the process, which we pretty much already have, services, policy considerations, what's ahead uh, beyond some of the planning efforts already mentioned. Uh, we do have some personnel requests, five FTEs. Uh, Director Sigdahl is gonna take us through a deeper dive on the finances, and then we'll go on to department proposals. Uh, we're gonna have a discussion, uh, and you saw it in the budget message about the carryover process, and then the budget schedule itself we'll discuss tonight, and, you know, I, I will share with you that we, we don't plan on talking about uh, the CIP projects tonight. Uh, one of the things I think we've learned over the last few budget cycles is trying to get through all of that in one session. We're able to, we're able to get this started, this process started a little bit earlier than we were the last couple of budget cycles, and so taking an extra meeting to get through it, so we can spend a little bit more time on the CIP stuff, seemed like a, a, a good thing uh, for the city to do. So with that, let's see, do we have our PowerPoint up? Oh, okay. Okay, there we go. So uh, biennial budget, I don't wanna, I spent quite a bit of time on this already, but uh, it's a month's lo- it is a month-long process, and in a typical year, and I, I know council's aware of this, but for any audience that may be uh, listening, the goal-setting uh, retreat marks the beginning of that process. And COVID impacted that and delayed us to September, and so there's some things staff had to anticipate uh, until we got confirmation from council. Uh, nonetheless, though, uh, as council recall, we did, we did get the CIP budget approved on time several months ago now. Um, well, the first two years of that largely make up the CIP uh, plan in this budget proposal. Throughout the summer and uh, into the fall, we're, we're doing analysis of expenses and revenues, uh, particularly challenging due to COVID, and uh, we were watching that very closely over the past several months. Uh, we had a couple of early data points that were promising, but uh, in a situation like that, we didn't want to get too excited about it, and so we actually waited to finalize a lot of things uh, until uh, about mid, mid-October. Oh, of, of course, just a few weeks ago, council conducted the hearing on uh, ADVARM uh, taxes and banked the implicit uh, price deflator, which was less than one percent. Uh, and the results, though, for the, I think, which is good news for our citizens, is that the levy rate uh, going into to two thousand and twenty-one will be less than the current levy rate uh, two thousand and twenty. And we finalized the documents, and, you know, we're at the point of uh, council review and public review. So one of the questions in the budget summary, uh, and we, we've kind of carried this question uh, for several years now, uh, the city went away, why would you want, why, why would you want us to come back? And certainly safety, uh, knowing something is gonna come when you need them, fire, police, ambulance, uh, even the snowplow. Uh, those are things folks count on, uh, when, when they're in trouble, and that's, those are some of the services provided by the city budget. Services you can count on, uh, like safe drinking water, uh, or when you flush things, they go away, like when they're supposed to. And uh, you having usable roads and traffic signals and signing and striping. Uh, quality-of-life things like parks and recreation service, public uh, facilities, arts and culture. Yeah, and I think uh, council's keenly aware of, there was a, quite a bit of uh, focus in your, in your goal updates on uh, quality-of-life issues. Equitable provision of services, uh, stewardship of public finances, property and assets, and planning for the future, which we've been doing a lot of, and we have, we have a lot to, a lot more to do to get uh, fully through our process, I think. Council just recently approved the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, that's such a great foundation. Uh, but we're gonna go into next year with a number of other planning efforts as well. Uh, so as I mentioned earlier, uh, a lot of inputs along the way. And uh, this being the, the kickoff of the preliminary budget proposal, uh, as I've mentioned before, remain a lot more opportunities for the public and council to, to have uh, uh, additional input. So some of the key themes in this budget are growth. Obviously, we're preparing for fifty-one thousand new residents over the next twenty years. Uh, long-range planning, as I mentioned, Comprehensive Land Use Plan is done. Uh, police and fire, utilities and transportation, all doing planning this next year. And you're gonna hear about several initiatives uh, from the departments themselves. Capital uh, projects, the second part of this presentat- presentation, uh, next week, we'll get through that. Uh, we're gonna be conducting a economic development plan and completing that, a downtown master plan targeted on capital investment and uh, supportive businesses and, and a customer service plan. So there's a lot of, a lot of efforts along economic development. Quality of life, uh, we've discussed quite a bit already, but we're anticipating some some new efforts, uh, the two of our new uh, commissions, uh, the IDEC, IDEC, uh, Inclusion Diversity and Equal Equity uh, Commission, as well as uh, Arts and Culture. And then organizational efficiency, uh, we've learned a lot about leveraging technology uh, during this COVID, and uh, we learned how expensive it is as well, but uh, it does create some efficiencies. Uh, one of the big uh, items, and I know a couple of the council members are signed up, is is uh, uh, I guess test assistance on this, and that's the Ask Pasco uh, effort, as well as you, you're gonna hear about emergency radios and software and and other technology in here, so really the, the one policy uh, major policy consideration you have in this budget. Oh, we're missing a slide. I, I think I'm gonna turn it over to here, turn it to Rija at this point in time.
Good evening, Rija.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, uh, Mr. Zabel. I will have, I know exactly which slide you're talking about, and I will have to find that here, so. Um, I, I'm hoping it's going to be further down the presentation here. Um, so, um, Mayor and councilmembers, uh, the slide in front of you is one of our major um, FTEs, uh, our major fund, which is uh, our general fund, uh, the fund that uh, allows us to serve our community um, overall in terms of public safety, Parks and Recreation, uh, finance, uh, HR, council itself, city manager's office, uh, and many other uh, functions within the department, or within the city. And as for the FTE, you will see about uh, for the proposed budget, two hundred and fifty-seven point six FTEs, and FTEs are full-time equivalents. Uh, and that is a two uh, FTE increase from the nineteen to twenty uh, adopted budget. And those two are a net effect of some of the FTEs that we have moved out of general fund um, to, um, because we've been evaluating how our operations work and where uh, the people should be funded out of. So we've been doing that evaluation all across the other funds as well, so it has resulted to, two of our staff, uh, two of the staff are FTEs moving from general fund to other funds. Uh, and also an addition or a proposed addition of uh, some FTEs that uh, we will get to here soon. Overall, as uh, Mr. Zabel mentioned, uh, this is a balanced budget, uh, same as uh, for the general fund as well. Though you will see here, the expenditures are exceeding the revenue uh, by about four, four-and-a-half million dollars. And the reason for that is some of the capital project that we have scheduled out of the two thousand and nineteen LTGO bond proceed, which is basically the remainder of our uh, fire station eighty-four relocation project. Uh, but overall, the funds coming out of But overall, the funds coming out of general fund are the revenue coming into general fund. The expenses for two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two are being supported by the revenues. We're also, in terms of the increases within the different fund type, or the different types of expenses, like Mrs. Zabel mentioned. Our salaries and benefits, those always increase year, year over year, of course. But if council remembers, we did a wage scale adjustment to bring the, the cities, we scaled. In line with the market. So there's some impact of that. There's also some of the collective bargaining agreements that were pending in our last adoption of the budget. So there's some increases related to that as well. Also, you will see some increases proposed in terms of supplies cost. And mostly that is due to COVID-related issues. And then, of course, we have a lot of plans, the master plans that we have planned for this year or for the next biennium. And that also increases our professional services cost. We've also looked at the revenues coming in to the city and really looked at our sales tax, which is one of our major revenue to general fund. And as we've talked about in the past. This is a fairly sensitive revenue source in terms of how people, in terms of economic sentiment of people. However, we are fairly confident of our estimates here. And the reason for that is just the given history of this area in terms of how it, how we think it would fare. In terms of a recession, if that occurs in the next two years. And also the fact that we have, we've been looking at the trends of the industry that we have. And the industries that are bringing in the tax revenue. So we do believe what we have budgeted at this point is a fairly good representation of what we think. We're going to receive in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. However, of course, it goes without saying, COVID nineteen pandemic is very unique, which makes it hard to. Make any estimates. I definitely have been surprised, and I've told you that before with some of our sales tax revenue trend. We also have two million dollars additional that comes into general fund as a revenue. But also goes out of general fund as an expense. And I want to highlight that just because it's an accounting change. And so it's a net, no net impact to general fund, but you will see both of your bars increase because of that. Next slide, please. And in terms of fund balance, general fund is our, if, if there's any fund balance that you should really pay attention to. It would be general fund, that is where a lot of our salaries for fire, police. Finance and all of us, all of the departments that I mentioned comes out of. And there are different types of categories within fund balance. So just in, and so these are some of the major categories, in fact, all of the categories. So number one is restricted. And this is by law, has to be used for very specific things. So, for example, our two thousand nineteen LTGO bond, or we had this discussion with the, with what we could use, the two million dollars for the Giza stadium as well. If you get bond proceeds, you're, you're making a promise to the bondholders that you're going to make. Certain investments in the infrastructure of the community. And as they are reading us, they're looking at. At the impacts of those projects to the community and whether that is of benefit. And that also helps them determine whether we're able to pay off that loan thirty years from now or not. And so we cannot just spend that money on anything like operations. Also deposits from our customers and anything that is limitations posed by law. One good example for this would be our building permit revenue. There is a very specific usage for building permit revenue. And we have to track the revenue coming in and the expenses that you can net against that revenue. Also, some of the committed funds like council with the, with the electronic traffic camera. And anything that is above and beyond the expenses. For administration of the program itself would go to traffic safety. So that would be something that is committed, as well as donations for a specific purpose, things like that. And then assigned is an intention. So if you have an intention, like, for example, we have a authorized budget. Or you have an intention of utilizing all of your land sales for a specific usage. That would be an assigned funding, it's a lot less binding. But at least it shows an intention of, of where you plan to use that fund. And then unassigned is essentially an operational reserve and can be used for any purpose. All of that to say, next slide, please. So this is something that you've already been through and it's already eight thirty-six, so I'm not going to go into the details. This is the fund balance, we wanted to give you the actuals so that we're not estimating anything here. But we did start twenty twenty-two with almost forty-one million dollars, but almost twenty-one of it is money that we cannot touch. And then there's about two point four, five million of that, that is already assigned for specific projects that have not been spent yet. And so that leaves you with about seventeen point nine million dollars in unrestricted funds. And about twelve million of that would be your operational expense. But of course, you know, we can't, if we're going through a rough year, we can't just default on our bonds. And so you'd also have to set aside some money for your debt service payment. And so overall, if you were to consider your operational balance as something that you do not want to touch unless you absolutely have to. We have about three point four million dollars in additional reserves. I am a conservative finance director and I am an accountant, so I will say these are very, very good reserves and we are very lucky to have them. However, a lot of my peers across the nation have realized the recommended three-month operational expense. Especially in, in a place like COVID and in places where there's a high reliance on sales tax is probably not enough. And so it gives me great pleasure to say that we have above and beyond that. And of course, twelve million is only three months if nothing is coming in, and that's a pretty rare scenario. Next slide, please. If council, we discussed this LTGO bond quite a bit in, when we were adopting the two thousand nineteen, twenty biennial budget. And overall, we issued about twenty-two million dollars, eighteen of which was for the fire station relocation projects. And then four million for Giza stadium and animal shelter. And we have come in much lower in our bids. And these are just estimates, but we wanted to give you a status on where, where the project costs are, or estimates are at, at this point. And as you can see, for the fire projects, we allocated in the beginning when we issued the bond about eighteen million dollars. And at this point, we're looking close to seventeen million dollars. But the, the nice thing is that we had some of the station eighty-one, eighty-two training facility restroom remodel. Coming out of our REIT fund. And because we have been able to come in lower than what our estimate was for the relocation project. Were able to utilize that fund for, for these other projects and not use our internal REIT funding. And you will see some of the supplements for this. In the upcoming, in the next couple of weeks with our supplemental budget. And also last year during the mid-biennium adjustment, when we were sure of the station eighty-three bids, we did make some adjustments. There as well of taking money where we had budgeted out of REIT. We took it out of REIT and we, or we put it back to REIT and we took it out of the LTGO bond. What it also means is that we might, and this is a might because these are estimates. We might have about one point one million dollars out of this bond to use for our community center as well. Next slide, please. Okay, my apologies, Mr. Zabel, this is the slide you were looking for.
All right, great.
And.
Thank you, Rija. So we do have some policy considerations, I'll just jump back on this for a couple of minutes. So as I mentioned before, five new positions. And this is the list of the positions. So we have a couple of engineers, a senior engineer and a civil engineer. To, to help us on capital projects, particularly those associated with utilities. And then just the needs of the utility itself. So those are funded out of the utility fund, as is the instrumentation tech. I mentioned before, reliance on technology and that's, that's grown everywhere in the city. But also it's grown on some of the automatic, automated systems. Associated with our utility operation, whether that's lift stations or pump stations or. Controls that are treatment plants, water and sewer treatment plants. And it's getting to be a bit overwhelming for the one skated technician we have. So we're recommending an additional position, utility-funded position to, to assist in that work. And then general fund, I'll mention the deputy court clerk first. That really has to do with the, with the impact of the electronics traffic safety program. And that's also where that project is funded out of, there's sufficient revenues to, to fund that. Position. Out of those revenues and then a database application specialist, something that we're somewhat lacking. We have, we have a lot of. Software programs that we are failing to be able to maximize just for lack of. Really our own understanding, our own ability to train and, and maximize the use of those particular. Software. Couple of other things I wanted to chat about a little bit. And future considerations that you're going to hear during the biennium. And I alluded to that earlier. With respect to the police and fire, but there's also some other, other efforts coming out. Ambulance, we're, we're going to, in the process of. Doing a ambulance rate study that will be completing next year. A couple of the things that have impacted that, and we've talked about this before, this is the GEMT revenue. And that program's working pretty well now, as council may recall, this is really revenue. That replaces Medicaid revenue. Medicaid revenue used to be about maybe two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars a year. An ambulance ride costs, you know, between two and three thousand dollars. And our reimbursement for Medicaid was on the order of, I think, a hundred and sixty-five dollars, it seems like, was about the, was about the amount just a few years ago. And the state, it took a while, and I, I know council heard about this, certainly Mayor Martinez did during his earlier years on the council. We talked about this for a couple of years while we kind of sorted through and waited for the state to get this program up and running. And so now we're receiving some pretty decent revenue out of it. We did get some back, back billed revenues for two thousand seventeen. But as you can, you can note here, we've received four point, or excuse me, five point four million over the last three years. So that's been a great shot in the arm. We're trending at about one point seven million dollars a year, which really helps our ratepayers. And but we are, we are going to be needing to look at, at some point in time next year, ambulance rates. Water as well, we do have a, a three percent rate increase that was approved for twenty twenty-one already as part of a multi-year ordinance. And we have a rate study scheduled for twenty twenty-one. We'll talk a little bit more, I think, when we, when we discuss CIP projects as some of the projects that might be driving that. Similarly sewer, you have a four percent rate already built in. We're going to be looking at a, a rate study, doesn't necessarily mean we are going to be proposing a rate increase, but a rate study in twenty twenty-one. And I do, I do want to share with council, I think, one of the things we've learned as a, as a city and, and as professionals. Is that our. Trying to stay on top of rates and being diligent about. Current evaluations of the cost of service keeps us from the big surprise rate increases. And any rate increase, I think, staff recognizes is not something council takes lightly or necessarily wants to do. However, three or four percent. That, that are matched up with the increase of costs of power, chemicals or, or whatever might be driving it. Is far more palatable than a really late twenty percent all at once, which we've seen and, and many of us have experienced, so. And then you're going to hear a, a number of these, so I'm not going to go through all of them, some of them already mentioned, but we do have some master plans. That we'll be looking at throughout the biennium that may drive. Future policy decisions of the council during the biennium, both in the general fund and in our utilities. And with that, I think we're going to go into department reports, starting with municipal court. Which, of course, I agreed to do earlier today. And. Give me one second here. So I'll, I'll note, you can see the, the little uptick there on the yellow line, that's the, that's the additional. FTE that I mentioned just a few minutes ago, the court clerk. And the increase in the budget. Kind of follows along that line. Accomplishments in the court. And Judge, Judge wasn't able to be here tonight, so I'm pinch hitting for him, but so they've, they spent a lot of time on process improvement. And getting to a kind of a paperless, and that, that's a, I think, a multi-year effort on their part. I know I've talked to the court administrator about this for the last few years. As well as across training of staff, getting a little bit more versatility in there. The moral recognition therapy, therapy for domestic violence folks. And that, that is a bit of a counseling, I think, training that helps people recognize those behaviors. Particularly the, those that are conducting themselves in that way. Another, another piece of information, I think, that's useful for council to know that. Some of you may not know, and certainly members of the public may not know is, is the court. They're pretty much responsible for a lot of the graffiti cleanup we see. And they've spent a lot of time this year, in the last couple of years during the biennium on graffiti cleanup and dealing with dump sites. They put together a graffiti trailer. In twenty nineteen, that's really aided their. Efforts.
Yes. Do you mind going back a slide, I have a quick question on the budget. That one, so the increase in the budget. Do you know, would it be the, for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two proposed? Do you think, is that going to be a constant rise or is there an increase of that because of? The paperless or the new programs you're putting in there?
Let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Director Sigdahl if she's got a handle, because that, that's more than one employee. You know, that, the, the rate of the, an employee increase for a court clerk is gonna, would, would maybe jump that up. You know, eighty thousand dollars or so with benefits and so forth, you know, right? So.
Oh, so it's.
But that's a, that's a five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, all right.
So, Director Sigdahl, did you have a? Sense of what? The big driver, thank you.
Yes, there is, and the wage scale change really impacted this department as well. And in fact, it's something that has impacted the finance department just because of the type of people who are employed in this area. And how much the wage scale changed for them. Additionally, we have more hours for our judge than we have had in the past. And so that, that is another impact, as well as about a hundred thousand dollars more in services. And a lot of these services are related to, to translation services, security. And technology within the, the court system. And I, I, I cannot speak to the details of it, but definitely they have, it has changed. COVID nineteen has changed the way a court is run. And so a large part of the expenses that you're seeing are how do we serve the community during this time? As you know, courts are still, are, are open and trying to operate fully. So those are some of the, the changes or the increases overall.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Mayor?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, so 2021, 22 goals, they're evaluating payment options right now by adding credit cards. Now, that's that's not something the court has previously done. Continue working on paper paperless process. And then, you know, Judge Judge Stillwell is is taking, I think, an interest in really dealing with some of these low-risk probation cases and getting those things closed out as a as a time-saving measure, not only for the court, but for themselves as well. So executive department, you'll note a pretty significant drop there, both in FTE count and expenditures. And that's what you're going to find is we have a HR, council will recall, we have an HR department as a standalone department now. Whereas previously, that was part of the excuse me, that was part of the executive department. Non-departmental, also something that's managed through there. It includes a number of, excuse me, includes a number of costs. And again, I'm going to ask Risha to to jump in. I don't have my notes handy on that. My apologies.
No, absolutely. Usually non-departmental is almost a mishmash of everything. So you have things like election cost, since we just recently came through one, and library cost with our Mid-Columbia Library, we have a partnership and a contract with them, but also some of the transfer outs for our our capital budgets as well. And so you'll see that big jump in 2019, 2020 because of the the bond issuance that we did, and then some jump in 2021 and 2022 just for the carryover of, not carryover, but additional funding for those projects as well. However, it should, if if we're not done any big general fund bond projects or capital projects, then you'd see this area fairly standard because it's included with all of the contracts and with external agencies. I believe some of our visit tri-cities cost or chamber of commerce costs, things like that with other organizations within the community that we partner with.
So that gives you a sense of that?
Sorry, just just a quick question. I do have some questions on the city manager's budget and as much as I want to tease Mr. Zabel about it, it's late. I don't want to waste the time. We've got a, I've got a couple of questions. Should I take some of those more detailed questions on some of these slides or not slides, but some of the numbers in the packet offline at this point in time that we can discuss what those look like? Or would you rather ask the questions now? Looking for feedback.
I I think council member Mullany, if you want to, if you would like to ask them now, that's fine. And if we get too detailed, we can, we can go offline.
Sure. On on page 117 of the packet and specifically looking at the city manager budget there, I understand the drop in HR and and I'm not sure if I'm seeing a gap here, but I was looking at there's a, there's a, gosh, nine hundred thousand dollar increase in supplies and a four hundred fifty thousand dollar drop in services. And it looks like maybe some of those moved over to HR, but I was I was surprised at the that the at the nearly million dollars of additional supplies, Mr. Zabel, that you're ordering. I'm looking forward to seeing that desk.
That might be my error, and I do need to go and look at that. I will say that between supplies and services, it probably needs to be reversed. And there's a couple of things that are kind of unique to the city manager's office, because many times we've put a lot of our incidentals in here because we do not want to put them in our department budget, because sometimes you have it, you spend it. So this is the safest place for it. I will look into the details of that and get back to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, with that, I would touch on Economic Development Fund a few minutes and and Economic Development Fund, that's that's our 194 fund. You can see the one position we added in the last biennium. That's actually Economic Development Manager out of the CED department. Revenues from this fund come from primarily the lease rentals for the circles. And expenditures support the farm and support economic development activities. You can see our revenue, or excuse me, our expenditures proposed are down at this point in time. One of the things we're we're trying to do is reserve some cash because we may have likely some need to participate in some of the economic development projects associated with the process water reuse facility. So you're seeing a little bit of a fund balance start to develop in that fund, but no new positions and no other real issues, excuse me, initiatives in that fund that are that are new. Some of the things that have been accomplished in this department, certainly we all got to the virtual biennial goal setting. Also give some credit, a lot of credit to the city clerk as well in that in that regard. The city's COVID response is something the department's been involved in. Pretty much all of us in that department have been involved in the COVID response on a on a pretty regular basis. And Mr. Pashon has done some great work in a number of places, pulling together the Power DMS across all all city departments, which is a was a great software, a tracking system that's that was been beneficial for all of us. All-staff diversity workplace training, we just all completed. And small businesses support, council recalls the business reopening packs, legislative goals. Some of the some other accomplishments, certainly the reorganization of HR as a standalone department, and you hear from them in a minute. And some recognition from our communications manager from Natoa, we talked about just a couple of weeks ago, as well as the seems like a long time ago that we rolled out the logo design. But that wasn't last biennium and the African-American experience in Pasco, something that John also worked on very closely with CD and the consultant and and community members. So we did take on this this over the last few months, the Ocean Culture Commission and working on those folks with a new work plan. And the department's also taken on the diversity, excuse me, the inclusion, diversity and equity commission. So also working on that work plan with with that group as well. The city wayfinding program and implementation of logo standards, as well as investigation in the 2021 and 2022 effort, All American City. Council's up there, excuse me, the the department's up its goals with respect to PSAs, press releases and so forth. And we'll be also participating with some of the some of the planning. I'm not going to get into those. Those are more of a CED thing, but those those have a special importance for the department and we'll be we'll be tracking those and and working closely with city staff on those as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Human Resources and you can see when they were created, business budget, so.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I hope that you can hear me. I'm Colleen Chapin. I'm the Human Resources Director. And I thank you for the opportunity to share some of our key accomplishments of the Human Resources team in 2019, 2020, and some of our goals for the next biennium. The first slide that you see represents the funding to create the HR department that was formerly a division under the city manager and executive department. Our team consists of five point five FTEs, which is three HR specialists, an administrative assistant, a safety and training coordinator, and half of the FTE for the HR director. And you can see that's represented by that point five point five FTE. Next slide, please. If you'll look, some of our key accomplishments are recruitment of over a hundred FTEs in the past two years. And that's due in part to many retirements and attrition within the city, but also with people that leave the city for whatever reason that may be. We are proud to have settled the Pasco Police Officers Uniform and Non-Uniform Units, International Association of Firefighters and the International Union of Operating Engineers collective bargaining agreements during this time. We have assisted in reorganization of the Parks and Facilities Division and the Engineering and Community Economic Development Department. In 2018, 2019, actually, we implemented the Washington Paid Family Medical Medical and Leave Act, which was kind of time-consuming. And as most of you will know, in 2020, we have been tasked with managing the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, which has changed the effect of leave throughout the nation and the state to address the coronavirus and COVID pandemic. This has been a very complicated and unexpected time-consuming effort to assist our employees to comply with longstanding and complex laws. That has taken along a lot of energy. And I believe we've really done a good job in helping our employees with that. So those are some of our accomplishments we're proud of. If I can have the next slide, slide, please. Some of the goals that we hope to achieve in 2021 and 2022 is to achieve the Society of Human Resource Management Professional Certification for all of the staff in Human Resources, because we believe it's better to serve our employees and the public with new and challenging HR protocols. We're going to be conducting a review of our recruitment processes to make sure that they are culturally competent and looked at through that lens. We are assisting in coordinating a comprehensive citywide in-house training program. We will be taking on the bargaining of the important Pasco Police Officers Association Interest Arbitration Group this year in 2021. And we are also going to try to work really hard to help the parks look at filling our hard-to-work seasonal recruitments with using an external agency to help them. We expect also to do a complete review of all of our job descriptions so that the classifications are up to date and are available for any public-facing format so that people can see what our job descriptions are. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. So next, Director Zach Rakai here with Administrative and Community Services. Bring up my notes here. So the ACS department encompasses parks, recreation, facilities, information services, which is commonly known as the IT Division, the city clerk's office, and the ACS also oversees the indigent Defense Division of the Pasco Municipal Court. The proposal for the next budget is an increase over the current cycle, which is mainly due to increases not only in the usage of technology as a result of the pandemic, but also non-associated modernization efforts of our technology. And we just happen to fall in the standard cycle for license renewals for software and enterprise systems upcoming here. One-time spending for the during the cycle also has a couple of items that are in concert with council goals, where ACS will be leading a comprehensive and much-needed software update to our permit system, as well as the permitting system, which will positively impact multiple city departments as well as our community at large. And ACS will be facilitating a facility and community center needs assessment, along with a comprehensive update to the park's master plan. The increase in listed full-time employees was due to a reallocation of parks employees from seasonal to full-time, which was approved through city council action early in 2020, I believe in May. In addition to that, one FTE is added. That was the database applications administrator that was mentioned in an earlier slide that would come out of the general fund for this budget. Some of our accomplishments over the last budget cycle, ACS divisions really worked to streamline and streamline and modernize the provision and stewardship of public records. We've worked regionally on a number of technology, significant technology projects, including jurisdictional emergency management, working with the Franklin PUD to expand Wi-Fi access. And a lot of our work has also been in support of the COVID-19 pandemic. Parks and Facilities has been busy as well. Primarily, this has been a very beneficial time in in that we've received over the last biennial budget cycle, one point four million in RCO grants for parks and facilities projects. So we've seen that with the Schlegel Park Boat Basin Project, the A Street Sporting Complex, among others. We've also continued really adding some great regional and local recreational opportunities. In fact, held one of the more successful regional community picnics for the seniors in 2019 with over 900 participants. We started a summer movie series and obviously transitioned that to Carpool Cinema due to the restrictions during the pandemic. We've taken over a lot of recreation and and facilities has also been integral in our just facilities and the provision of staff during the COVID-19 pandemic, including the personal protective equipment, distribution and supplying. Also helping the Benton Franklin Health District with the mask surveys at various retailers around the tri-cities. So some of our goals, really, we're going to continue to establish a baseline and build a foundation from which we can meet the overall community goals. So some internal strategic planning for parks and facilities, as well as our recreation services staff in concert with the council goals, comprehensive update to the Parks and Facilities Master Plan, location assessment for the community center, along with an assessment of our current facilities in different neighborhoods throughout the city. Working with and supporting the Pasco Public Facilities District in their efforts for the Aquatic Center. And then implementation of software programs, updating our enterprise content management software, Laserfish, to meet records management needs. And working with our boards and commissions, as well as the underlying technological and productivity support systems for the council or, excuse me, for staff and other departments throughout the city. We're also working with the Fire Department on some of their alerting systems, working with the Police Department on some recreational and community outreach grants for some sports facilities in our parks, and working with various community groups to just hold and continue some of our great our great events like the Grand Old Fourth of July celebration and parade. Hopefully, we can hold that back to its former glory coming up this next year and work on just providing at least 20 baseball softball tournaments and keeping up with youth and adult sports as well. In 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 closing, that really kind of sums up ACS really quick here this evening. And I'll be happy to take any questions of council.
Yeah, well, I just, I put it under Rick's.
Oh, all right. Well, thank you, Zach, and Rick White here for community economic development. I did want to explain to council that, again, the C and ED department takes into account our economic development efforts, our community planning efforts, inspection services, which involves building inspection and code enforcement, development review engineering, which is added to the department this year and which is also accounting for the most of, almost all of the increase in the FTEs and the Community Development Block Grant Program, focusing on some of the accomplishments for this past year. Which is the next slide, please. The first two bullets involve efforts by the Inspection Service Division, particularly code enforcement. Believe it or not, a lot of what code enforcement does is not just related to reacting to citizen complaints, but it also involves a significant effort in public outreach, particularly in conjunction with the Police Department through the Block Watch program and the landlord-tenant organization and neighborhood meetings. We're often asked to take part in We're often asked to take part in those and provide materials essentially for landlords to distribute to their tenants. Council may also know that we have an emergency abatement program, and this is different from just simply abating a nuisance. This is a program that involves situations when things are so bad that the tenants of residential housing have to be relocated to temporary housing pending emergency repairs for buildings. We process approximately 15 to 20 of these every year, and we have a program for doing that, and the costs are recovered through the abatement and lien process. The next two bullets involve a very important effort and one that has taken up a lot of staff focus, actually over the last year and a half, the revised development review process in conjunction with incorporation of the development review and engineering staff into the CED department, focusing on efforts to promote a one-stop permitting center. You might hear that term "one-stop center" often. There probably is no such thing, but we're definitely on our way to providing a less-stop permitting center that the development industry and community can access to reduce the amount of processing essentially that needs to be accomplished in order to get a project approved. Kind of under the radar this year, but it has taken some staff effort, is Phase One of the Sign Code Revision Process, and this is basically an academic exercise that's focused on creating an organizational structure for our Sign Code that makes sense, which it currently doesn't. So that is now almost entirely completed. The Planning Commission will be getting a review of this at their upcoming meeting in a week now, and we're looking forward to Phase Two of the Sign Code Revision Process in the coming year. As mentioned earlier in the presentation this evening, we're nearly complete with the Underrepresented Communities Grant. This was an award that the city received from AWC for excellence in projects. It focused on the African-American experience to the history of Pasco, and unfortunately, due to COVID issues, some of the research to complete the grant has not been completed. However, the National Park Service has extended the deadline for one year so that the city will be able to be reimbursed through our consultant for this, for the historical inventory. One of the big things in community planning, of course, was the urban area expansion and the comprehensive plan environmental impact statement. We're happy to say that this is now progressing onto Franklin County for their process through their Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners, and we hope to have a decision, probably not by the end of the year as currently envisioned, but perhaps by the end of January. The department implemented the full use of the Hearing Examiner System this year. We had almost a full year last year, not quite, and a special thank you to council for approving this system. It's lessened the city's liability for land use decisions. It streamlined the project permit process, and it has allowed the Planning Commission to focus on the very important land use and policy issues that a city that's growing as fast as Pasco simply has to deal with in order to be prepared for the future. One of the things, one of the curveballs this early this year, of course, was the Coronavirus Relief Act that provides business assistance. That was, pretty much took on the atmosphere of an emergency kind of process, although there's a lot of need for the assistance grants. We simply had to make sure that the boxes were checked so that we didn't end up paying this back to HUD within a year or two. I'm pleased to say that we've done that. We've roughly produced approximately 50 business assistance grants through CDBG or the Coronavirus Relief Aid out the door, and we've definitely noticed that the program seems to have plateaued, which is not to be unexpected due to very similar programs announced by the Pasco Chamber and Franklin County. So there's a number of options for business assistance here in Pasco and Franklin County. And then lastly, we did receive a state grant for reimbursement of staff efforts that relate to programs focused on providing affordable housing. These are in direct response to House Bill 1923 and House Bill 1406, which is the state sales tax set aside for contributions to a fund for housing affordability options for the city. And you'll be hearing a little bit more of that within a minute or two. If we can go to the next slide, please, for goals. Of course, you'll see a number of master planning efforts related to downtown economic development and finishing up the Broadmoor Master Plan, the Sign Code Revision, which I've already spoke about. Something council may not be aware of is that our entire development regulation program is under analysis by a consultant specializing in organization and, let's say, user-friendly development regulations. We expect to initiate Phase Two of that this coming year. We also expect to be able to perform a housing capacity plan, which, as I mentioned, is in relation to House Bill 1406. And something that, again, may not be on council's radar is the upcoming state building and energy code update. Under normal circumstances, this would have been done in July. Due to the pandemic, it's been delayed until the first of the year. Normally, not a very controversial program. This year, though, the energy code update will definitely impact the cost of housing in regards to air exchanges, insulation, and a number of other factors that I'm sure we'll hear more about, and staff will be having a workshop item on this as we get closer to the update deadline. We're still working on the integration of development review functions. The primary tasks are done. There's a number of issues that require fine-tuning, and we're trying to work through those. And we intend to develop and implement a rental rehabilitation program in conjunction with the code enforcement program so that we have a secondary option for use of HUD home funds to improve housing stock within the city. And if there are no questions, I would be glad to turn it over to the Pasco Police Department, otherwise I'd be happy to answer anything council might think of.
This is Councilmember Maloney. I just have a question for you, Mr. White.
Yes, sir.
So in the past, we've had a position for, that was more focused specifically on outreach to the community in terms of economic development. Is that position still available? Is that going to be filled?
That position is still available. It's not in the general fund. It's in Fund 194, and actually, the downtown master plan and the economic development plan are expected to be primary job responsibilities, at least initially, for that position.
Great, thank you. I know I'd seen some about that before, and I just couldn't find it when I'm flipping through my sheet, so thank you, Mr. White.
All right. Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Mayor, council members, the public that may be watching. I'm Ken Roski, Chief of Police for the Police Department, and I'm pleased to present our budget for this year and talk a little bit about our accomplishments and some of our goals that we laid out for you for next year, or the next biennium. You'll see a relatively flat line for us. The slight increase that is reflected on the graph is largely due to salary increases from the already established collective bargaining agreement with the members of the department, so relatively a flat line increase or budget for this year with just that increase for salaries. Slide number two, please. So you'll see some of our accomplishments this year. We've been very busy trying to keep up with COVID and keep ourselves on track, but over the biennium, we have achieved the national accreditation, which you've heard about, known as Kalia, and we've reaccredited with Washington State. So we reported on this, but it's important to know, it's a big effort for us in undertaking something we hold ourselves to a high standard, or one of only two law enforcement organizations in the state of Washington hold both accreditation standards, and we are the only municipal law enforcement organization to hold dual accreditations in the state. And then I spoke to this last week on the opioid epidemic that's going on, and we've implemented the OD mapping. It's been a good tool for us to monitor and track overdoses from a database standpoint. You approved four grant officers for us to start a homeless liaison officer program to help monitor people experiencing homelessness and help provide resources to them and get them into wraparound services and ultimately reduce those people experiencing homelessness, and then, of course, give our officers the ability to get the services that are needed. You'll see that this program is just being launched, and as we get into the goals, you'll see where we expand this. We expand this program a little bit further, but we're pleased to at least have it fully launched and off the ground and running as we complete this year. We've spoke about the mental health professionals and our embedding program, our partnership with Lord's Crisis Center, and putting mental health professionals embedded and in the field with our officers. They cover about 12 to 14 hours a day that we have them readily available in the field, but they are available 24 hours a day for on-call crisis. And there are three of those, or each of the three cities has a mental health professional, and our joint agreement allows us to share resources across the river as needed. So if we need, if we have two calls and we need an extra professional, we can certainly call one. If ours happen to be in training or off for some reason, the other partnering cities would have a professional that we can call over to help us in our city. So it's been a great partnership, and you'll have more of that in the goals for the coming biennium. A big project for us as well was the body-worn camera deployment into the field officers, our patrol officers working the field, and to have had that, that program is fully operational, fully rolled out. In fact, you just renewed the contract where we wrapped a bunch of our data and evidence processing with body-worn camera into one contract that you just approved for us, but that was fully deployed this year. In addition, we worked with the clerk's office for the procedures, the policies and procedures in conjunction with recording that for public disclosure. It's not quite as simple as just deploying cameras into the field. There's a lot of backend work and cross-department cooperation from the police department to our clerk's office to make sure that we meet all of the requirements. And then the records management of a police department is always a big undertaking, and we have taken and dedicated some resources to clean up over 30 years of backlog of police records. That is a huge undertaking. It's something that it seems like it's always on the, it's always the weight on a police department, that they're always trying to figure out how they're going to get through backlog of police records. But we're pleased that we've made a concerted effort, and we have cleaned up, like I said, back 30 years worth of police records management, and that was a huge undertaking and something we're proud of. We are putting together some programs now to help us keep a handle on it so that we don't get 30 years behind. Records management requirements have driven some of our resources, making it more prudent for us to clear these records, and so we'll have some processes in place going forward. Next slide, please. As we talked about our 21, 22 goals, we took the opportunity to look at these, and virtually every one of these at some form or another, most of them anyways, we will match up to complement your goals that you've put together for the city as council goals. One of those is already, Mr. Zabel spoke of that earlier, was the strategic plan, the comprehensive strategic plan that we'll be undertaking, help us guide the police department as we prepare for the growth that we know is coming, and the delivery model, the delivery service that the public and you as council expect us to deliver and what that's going to look like in the future. The homeless liaison officer program, I mentioned to you that we're, now that we have it operational, the goal is to partner with social services so that law enforcement is not in the middle of trying to navigate homeless individuals, but rather we have the services and where those services are available so that people can get the assistance. And we're not trying to do the social service work, but we could partner with those agencies and get those people the help that they need. And then our partnership, as I mentioned, with our homeless liaison, or with our HLO program, our embedded mental health professionals, we need to look for sustainable funding, and we'll be working with Lord's and other entities to find additional grants, funding sources. I know that council has had some opportunities to discuss this as well, and so we will, over the next couple of years, make this one of our goals to help focus on how we can keep those embedded mobile health professionals and make sure that the program continues to be successful. And then, one of the things that we talk a lot about, social media, coffee with a cop programs, is continued community engagement opportunities. COVID obviously has thrown a wrench into that, but we need to be prepared to come out of that strong and continue with our, with opportunities to partner with our community, engage with them. We are only going to continue our success as a police department, as combating crime, if we can stay engaged with the community. Some other things, trying to utilize technology, state-of-the-art technology, to monitor our customer service level on an immediate basis, and then the delivery option that we have as a police department for our customer and from an automated standpoint, ensuring that they understand where the police department is, an automated process to keep them informed on if they're a victim of a crime or on their crime that they've reported, on their call for service that they've called for a police officer. And much like you might see big corporations, Amazon, Domino's, keep you updated on your pizza, but we want to do the same thing, keep you, from a customer service standpoint, apprised at your police service level that you're getting. You've heard me mention difficulties with recruiting police officers, the challenges that we're seeing in present times for a lot of reasons. So some recruiting software that we're going to implement to try and generate viable candidates. We aren't going to lower, we will not lower the standards for bringing recruits into the door, but partnering closely with human resources. And then some looking at some software to help improve that. The the image of police seems to be on the horizon right now. But the Pasco Police Department, your police department, for a couple of decades, has focused on community engagement. And the image that the police department has with the public and with the department as a professional. We'll continue to work on improving that image as well. And then maximizing forensic technology, crime scene recording, best practices with unmanned aircraft systems. And coming up with developing a program and a policy will work at bringing some of bringing a policy back to council to look at. As we start deploying this type of technology for for crime scene processing. And then finally, we police training is something that we're very fortunate. With our patrol schedule, with our training cadre that we have, and now we're in a position where we need to, we have a training building. Probably outdated, needs to be brought up to date and what will a facility remodel to take us into the future to complement? Law enforcement training into the future. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me before I pass this on. All right, Chief Gear, it looks like you're up. Thank you very much, Council.
All right, Chief Roski, thank you. So with the first slide with the Fire Department General Fund budgeting. You see there's some increase in 21, 22. Uh mainly absorbing the six firefighters that we have on a safer grant that ran out at the end of 20. The self-contained breathing apparatus purchase, which was done through a grant, but has to be funded in the regular budget. The adding a second boat for marine spill response, which again is an ecology grant for about $100,000. But again, has to be budgeted in the general fund. And we have some retirement cash outs of some very senior staff people. We know of at least three that are retiring in 21. Uh probably three to 400,000 worth of cash outs, vacation and sick leave cash outs for those individuals. So that's that's primarily the the increases in the Fire Department General Fund budget. Then we move over to the next slide for the ambulance fund. So in the ambulance fund, the only real increase, the major increase would probably be. Moving our Pasco Resource Navigator, that's our our social service connection worker from a half time to a full time position. And then the cost of supplies and equipment, which unfortunately, but naturally, given the. Medical condition that's going on with the COVID, supplies have gotten harder to get. And probably costs a little bit more money, even though that's not supposed to happen, it does. And so that's that's really trying to focus on having the the supplies available to deal with pandemic through the next year or so. As we move through that. Next slide. I combined accomplishments, both fire and ambulance, it kind of end up into one set of slides. So just to kind of, in the interest of time, kind of hit the high points. You know, our last two-year biennium budget was initiating the Pasco Resource Navigator program. Which is a contract we have with a group called Consistent Care. Um and they supply a contracted individual to us, social service worker individual to us. And we've asked to move that to a full time, from a half time to a full time position. It's been very effective at dealing with some very at-risk people that rely on 911. As their safety net and getting them off of that and back into the regular social service agencies that they should be involved with. Again, moving down through here, just hitting some highlights. Not not to kind of blow our own horn, but the Fire Department was pretty involved with helping the city. Get into continuity of operations. What are we going to do when we can't come to work? Um and um helping with the distribution and what kind of PPE should be used? And when should people come to work when they've been or had a contact versus what is an isolation, what's an exposure? We have a lot of experience with that in the past with many other types of diseases that have presented themselves in society. And I I think we were kind of instrumental in helping people with that, helping the city especially kind of move through that. Worked with the Health Department, as many of you know, on the high throughput test site. Um and I'm amazed to say that that high throughput test site, which was designed for 500 people. Tested 756 people today. And I know I went through it last week from a contact that I had. And there were 696 people tested that day and I still had my result at 2:15 the next day. It's a pretty amazing site and I'm I'm pretty proud of how that whole thing came together. We will be updating our strategic plan, which was done in 2017 and we accomplished many of those goals. And we'll be bringing that to council in December for adoption for the next three to four years. Uh and we hope that 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 goes well with council. And then obviously we managed or worked on a lot of construction projects, remodels of two stations. The construction of two stations and we're moving ahead on trying to start design on Station 5 on Road 100. Next slide for goals, thank you. Just hitting, you know, one of the big things is council has a goal of maintaining the protection class three. And that's going to be really difficult in this city with the growth that we're seeing. We're going to detail a captain up to acting battalion chief in December. And his assignment will be to to develop a maintenance and improvement plan. That we'll be bringing to council probably in January, February, maybe a little later than that actually. For your review and hopefully adoption to try and maintain your protection class three, but certainly not to slip below a four. One of the other things I want to jump down to is develop and implement a funding stream for inspections of high hazard occupancies. We did analysis a couple of years ago of the facilities in Benton, Franklin, Yakima and Walla Walla Counties. That store and use hazardous materials that are required to reported under federal requirements. Yakima had the highest number of materials, Pasco had the second highest number in four counties. Yakima implemented a fee schedule on those reports that are required. It's called a tier two report. We're going to look at that program in 21. And they're collecting revenue to provide a higher level of inspections of those facilities. That are utilizing storing or utilizing those high hazard hazardous materials. And that's something we'll be bringing to council in 21. We also will be bringing, hope to bring to council in 21, a proposal to implement fighter impact fees. To help fund future fire stations. You know, as council knows, you have park impact fees currently and you have traffic impact fees currently. That help fund those public works projects. We are looking at some significant fire station projects over the next 10 years in the city. And somehow or another, we have to develop a funding system for those projects. So at this point, we're going to propose some impact fees for fire stations. And then the the other one, again, I talked about a little bit, we got a grant for marine response. As you know, we have a couple of oil terminals, we have the railroad tracks, the McNary Pool, the dam above McNary. The the water dam above McNary has very little marine response capability. We've really stepped out as a city and developed the rescue response capability. We just recently received a grant from Department of Ecology for $100,000. To begin developing marine spill response capability on this McNary Pool. And we'll be working ahead on that. And then, as as Ben mentioned before, we need to do an updated ambulance service rate study update since we haven't done one since 17. So with that, is there any questions from council? And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Shigdell.
Thank you, Chief Gear. Now I'm putting my hat on as a department head and talking about my own budget rather than the whole city's budget. You see a slight decrease in FTEs for the Finance Department. And again, we're always looking at efficiencies within different departments and seeing where the work needs to be done. We did have an additional staff that council was kind to authorize mid-biennium. But we also moved one of our staff members from Finance Department to Community and Economic Development Department. As they were doing a lot of business licensing and with all of the changes that we've made in business licensing. We we have found that it is better for that staff to work and for that work to be within within that specific department. You do see an increase overall that you would not equate with a decrease in FTE. And like with municipal court, we have a large volume of our number of staff that are within a specific wage class. And a in a job description that were whose wage scale was significantly impacted when we made those changes. We've also looked at, every time we have a vacant position, we're looking at what is the right position? That we should be hiring. So there's been some changes to that area as well. Also, we are, and I will talk about this a little bit more in my goals. We also have a capital outlay for doing kiosk for our customers. So that we can extend the way that we serve our customers further and basically increase their access to us. Next slide, please. Um so overall, finance has, we have a financial system called New World. And the city bought this system back in 2013, fully implemented in 2000 or fully implemented in 2014. Since then, there's been a lot of turnover within the department. And so as we've been or I have been coming in and trying to learn the system and we've been getting up to speed. In terms of what is available, we've found that there's quite a few things that we needed to do in terms of the reporting capability of the system. Uh it works great in terms of data entry, but getting that data out has been difficult. So we worked with our administrative and community services department. Where the IT department is housed to find the right solution in terms of support for the Finance Department. And as a vacant with a vacancy, we decided to reassign a staff. And instead of an accounting staff, we got an IT staff. Uh and we've been able to do quite a bit, given the fact that they get uninterrupted time. And not all of the city is calling them about one thing or another. So we've been able to do a lot of data mining essentially, for the lack of better words, out of our financial system. So we're able to do large scale analysis of data that we've not been able to do. Uh and we've been making some really good progress on that. We have created a comprehensive and robust financial report dashboard. So a lot of data that was unavailable to us before or was not reproducible. We're able to reproduce now, just as an example, creating the budget would have taken probably three to four times more hours. For us to do in the past than what it did this year. Uh and that's not to even speak of the fact that we could refresh data and look at what what was the immediate impact and things like that. So the quality of it also increased, which is a boon given with COVID-19, we've been pretty much running on fumes. We also participated in implementation of Ask Pasco, which is a a communication platform. Where us, the city can talk to our citizens and they can or residents and they can talk to us. We have, we have implemented the tool as it in works. And we have the test group and I really appreciate all of the council members and the other pilot users for for. Willing to be our guinea pig on that. Uh and our goal is to roll it out to the larger public by January 1st or starting January 1st. Uh we are also constantly looking at our how we deliver service to our customers. And with that, we're looking, which is internal and external. And we're we're looking at it all the time and trying to find places where we are able to deliver that and the right time to do that. So business license, moving it to CED is a really good example of it. Changing an accounting position to IT is is another example. So we will be continually doing that in future years as well. We also implemented an employee self-service, which is essentially giving our employees access to their own data. So to be able to review their pay stubs, their paycheck information, their W2s, their W4s, things like that. And also be able to change or request change online rather than having to come and visit the payroll department directly. Uh we're also currently working on an electronic implementation of an electronic time card system. So we have a couple of departments who are using it right now. And our goal is to roll it out to all of the city hall staff. And the reason that I make that distinction is that they're usually staff with lesser complicated time sheets. So that is the goal for the end of this year and we're also working with the Fire Department. To see if we can use their schedule system to automate our timekeeping process. We also issued two debts. We talked about the 2019 LTGO bond to fund some of the big capital projects like the fire stations. And the Giza Stadium and the animal shelter. Uh and we also did the 2020 reuse facility bond, which was the revenue bond smack dab in the middle of COVID pandemic. Uh and quite proud of the fact that we preserved our credit rating, though at some point here, I would like to. We would like to see increasing our credit rating, though there's a lot of outside factors that we might not be able to control there. And as we are looking at the department itself and figuring out where we want to go. We have kind of entered this phase two of our strategic plan. And we will be working on the phase two for the next couple of years. Next slide, please. Uh like I mentioned, we're going to continue towards full implementation and stabilization of the city's financial system. The time sheets and the self-service was part of it. We've had those modules for some time, so we're starting to implement some of those modules. Also, now that we have raw data that we can play around with in Excel. We would also like to take that data and create a dashboard so that at a certain point. Like your general fund report, we would like for that to be maybe monthly where there's a link and you can go and look at it at any point. That kind of data that you can easily understand and really do not have to read very much into. Also would like to look at our debt structure and identify any opportunities for our for savings. If council remembers, when we were issuing the 2020 bond, we also refunded some some of our older bonds and we saved about. some of our older bonds and we saved about, uh, one point three, uh, million dollars in the process. So we will always be looking at that, uh, for the, for those opportunities and seeing if, uh, there is a way we can, um, reduce the debt service for the city. Uh, we have been looking at the rates and fees for all of the major services, but, uh, we do feel that it's time to kind of go and look through our PNC and look at all of the rates. So that is something that we'll be embarking, embarking upon, uh, in the next two years. Uh, and also creating a comprehensive finance manual, um, something that for a, for a city of our size, we definitely need, uh, and would definitely help with, uh, continuation of, uh, policies and processes for the department as well. Uh, we'll be participating in, uh, implementation of the new permitting software. As with everything, finance is, uh, very, uh, software reliant and also we rely on a lot of data coming from other departments. So we'll be working with the CED and IT department to, uh, to make sure that, uh, we have a successful implementation. Um, and, uh, not more importantly, but, uh, utility billing software is definitely going to be, uh, another one that is going to be very critical for us to get right. Uh, and, uh, this is something that we will be working with, uh, our IT department, um, very closely, um, to ensure that we can, um, we can, um, implement this new billing software. And the reason for that, uh, for, the reason that we need to implement a new one is because our current one is very old. Uh, and it is supported, uh, by a company that, uh, has been, has been bought, has bought this product and has basically put it on a shelf, uh, for a long time. They do support it and they do a great job at it, but, uh, uh, it's definitely a point of concern. Uh, and, uh, if there is no support at a certain point, we do not want to be backed into a corner, uh, for a software that reaches at least, uh, twenty-two thousand accounts each month. So it would be, uh, pretty difficult for us to get right if we were, um, um, i- if we were in a rush. We'd also like to, uh, create, uh, interdepartmental work order system because we're really starting to work with each other and we're becoming a complex city in terms of our operations. Uh, and, um, we are also, uh, partnering with our local utility providers and this is something that will come to the council here in a month, uh, or less than a month, um, with kiosks. And, uh, I mentioned this earlier, uh, this is essentially, uh, a partnership effort with, uh, some of the providers, uh, utility providers like, uh, Franklin PUD. Uh, and what we would do is, uh, partner on different, um, kiosks across the city. Uh, but, uh, our customers would be able to come in and pay, uh, via cash or credit card or check, uh, and after hours, anytime twenty-four seven, um, and be able to pay any of their utility within the city of Pasco. Uh, and, um, so they can pay their, their electric bill, their water sewer with the city. Um, and, um, I, I believe we also have BDI, uh, who is going to be partnering with us. And so if council approves, we would like to go with that. That will also help our customers quite a bit, uh, in event of, uh, COVID-like, uh, emergency where our offices are closed right now. And we do have a lot of customers who like to pay us in cash. So, uh, we would like to provide them with options, but then also a lot of people who come in after hours were open from eight to five, which is not ideal hours for our customers. Um, and also, um, we are, um, we, it is something that is in our emergency plan as well. Uh, we get, uh, significant amount of revenue each month, uh, from our utility funds. And so we would like to have, um, avenues available for our customers to pay us, um, in the event that the city hall needed to be closed or for whatever reason. Uh, with that, um, if you, I'm happy to answer any questions. Okay, thank you. Um, and, um, I will pass this on to Mr. Worley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, that was a check to see if you were still awake too. Good evening. Um, we're gonna go through the public work stuff fairly quickly. I know it's been a long presentation and, uh, there's a lot of detailed information in the budget book. So we're just gonna briefly go over it in this presentation and feel free to answer questions at the end. Uh, the first slide that you see is the Public Works Engineering. As most of you know, Public Works is divided up into two divisions. We have the Engineering Division and the Operations Division. And the first one for engineering, you will notice that the FTE account and the expense account has gone down. This is reflective of the reorganization that was discussed earlier today, uh, with part, with CED and the, uh, Development Review Staff moving over into that department. The FTE number that you see here also represents the two additional engineering staffs that is being requested as part of this, uh, preliminary budget. Next slide, please. So the next slide shows information related to the street fund and there has been a drop in the expense and the revenues for the street fund as well as the FTE count. And a lot of this is related to the, um, w- working through the more efficient ways of dealing with all the different areas within operations. And we've, uh, gone through a process of reassigning staff to other utilities where they get used more than in the street fund. So that's the explanation for why the FTE count has dropped. It's just been relocated. And then as far as the expense and the revenues being decreased, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget included quite a significant amount of road maintenance work through the overlay program. And we have not proposed as much of that in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two quite yet. Uh, some of you may recall that we got into a contract with a company called IMS to go do a, uh, an evaluation of the city's streets. So we're gonna wait till we get the results of that before we take, uh, too much look at what we're gonna do. We'd like to be able to provide that master plan for council to be able to determine what our needs are. And one of the items that I wanna mention is that for the twenty nineteen, actually for the twenty twenty budget, is that the revenues because of the COVID situation, uh, are not as high as what was previously budgeted. So one of the things that we'll likely see here in the near future when we come back for the, uh, supplement to the twenty twenty budget is probably about a four hundred thousand dollar subsidy to the street fund for, to cover the revenues that were not received, uh, due to the COVID nineteen-related issues. Uh, the other, uh, issue related to twenty twenty nineteen is that we had the Transportation System Master Plan programmed in that year and in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, we're gonna finish that off. Um, so, next slide, please. Uh, this is the Street Overlay Fund and this is a fund that actually accumulates a lot of money for additional work on some of our larger projects. You'll see in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two proposed budget that there is a significant increase in expense. That is related to some funding that we have set aside for the Lewis Street Overpass Project and the rest of the overlay program. So combined, that makes for a very large investment in our street system for twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. And, um, next slide, please. In our utility funds and our, our operational costs, you will see that in our FTE count, there is a slight increase and that is related to some of that reorganization or that moving staff around to be more efficient. Uh, that's what that's related to. Uh, and then you'll see, uh, an increase in expenses and a lot of that has to do with some water rights issues and purchases that we are now taking on. Council may remember we brought those water rights issues to council for approval with the Department of Ecology. And there's gonna be, uh, some reduction that helps offset that cost related to the, uh, twenty fifteen refinancing of some debt services. And then at the end of twenty twenty, there will be a large debt service that drops off. Uh, and so all of that combined shows a slight increase in, uh, expenses and our revenues go up significantly, uh, due to, uh, revenue increases and due to, uh, projects that we're gonna be doing. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna run through these fairly quickly because I know it's, it's been long. So in the Engineering Department, most of you heard that we've reorganized the department, uh, which has been an opportunity to hire a new CIP manager, which most of you know as Maria Sarah. And we helped, uh, CED participate in the Transportation System Master Plan. Uh, we also participated earlier in a year on some revisions to the Development Review Process and how that relates to, uh, Public Works Engineering. And then next week, we will be looking at the capital project portion of the budget and we'll be giving a presentation. And in that presentation, we will identify, um, all of the projects that were completed over this past biennium and those are not listed here tonight. Next slide, please. So our goals for engineering is to complete a five-year pavement management program. As I mentioned, we hired a company to scan all of our streets and from that data, we're gonna be looking at developing this plan. We're also gonna be looking at a data-driven proactive neighborhood traffic calming program. Uh, we've been able to deal with this on a case-by-case basis in this last biennium, but we really need to have an overall program that is data-driven for us to be able to address this neighborhood traffic calming throughout all areas within the city. We will continue to work on thirteen major projects, uh, which we'll get into a little bit more next week. Uh, we're, we're also gonna be continuing our collaboration with Ben Franklin Transit to enhance Mobility and Accessibility Project. We've done a little bit of that in this past biennium and we will continue to do that, uh, in more earnest this coming biennium. I'll go ahead and skip the next two and go on to the next slide, please. In this particular slide, there are so many different divisions within operations. What I did was I pulled out one item from each one of them. There's been so many accomplishments from each of these different areas that it would have taken too much time. So I identified, uh, some key points of accomplishments within each of the divisions. And you can see that there has just been a ton of work done, typical stuff like your, our, our number of, uh, gallons of water treated, our wastewater treated, the amount of irrigation water that was provided this year. Uh, in our stormwater division, we swept up seven hundred and forty-three tons of street material, which helps keep our catch basins and stuff clean and helps reduce those cleaning costs. Um, our farm operations continues to, uh, ensure that those pivots are working like they're supposed to. We had a big emphasis this year on, uh, crack ceiling, uh, so there was a lot of work done in that area and we fielded about a thousand customer calls this year. Next slide, please. And again, we have so many goals for each of the different utilities. What I thought I would do is just pull out one from each one. And so for the water side, uh, we're gonna increase our unidirectional flushing to meet twenty-two percent requirement for the WSRB rating. We wanna be able to help fire maintain, uh, the level three rating that we have. And so we'll be working on that this next year. Uh, our sewer and our wastewater treatment plant, we wanna, uh, set a goal for another violation-free year, which would be our seventh year of perfect compliance with our NPDES permit. So that's a great goal. Uh, irrigation rehabilitation, take new, two new wells or two existing wells, I should say. And, uh, you can see the rest of the information there on the goals for the other, uh, divisions within operations. And so with that, are there any questions?
No, almost none.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Worley.
Oh, you bet. I'll turn it over to, uh, Rija.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. Um, this, uh, last slide, I promise it's the last slide, uh, is a new concept that we are kind of introducing to the council. It must not be new to a lot of you, um, but definitely something that, uh, we haven't done in the city, um, in a long time, if ever, uh, which is a concept of carryover. Uh, and what we are proposing is that we, uh, introduce an accounting practice of carryover, um, to the city's budgeting process, but mainly just to our, uh, capital projects. And the reason for that is, um, because capital projects, there's, uh, delays for reasons. There's the, the schedule that does not always line up with, uh, our, uh, budget years, um, be it biennium or annual in the past. And, um, essentially by, uh, introducing this, uh, concept of carryover, we would be able to provide a lot more clarity to a project budget and not co-mingle the funds by, uh, trying to estimate, um, two, three ti- uh, two, three months before the year end and trying to budget something that we might use, might not use. Uh, and basically at times, uh, we inflate the, uh, the project cost. So starting, uh, two thousand twenty or end of two thousand twenty, uh, we would like to do a carryover of all of our capital bud- budgets. Uh, this would not apply to our operational, uh, budgets that would end at the end of the year. Um, and as with everything, every penny that the city spends requires an authorization from the council for the, for the budget year, which for us is the, uh, two thousand, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, and so we would come to council, uh, probably by, by the end of quarter, uh, the first quarter next year and give you a list of all of the projects, uh, for whom we have to carry over some of our costs, uh, and why. Uh, and, um, basically get another authorization to spend those funds, uh, for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, but not included in this budget as we're going through the process. Um, so, um, just something, uh, of a new concept that we wanted to talk about, especially given that we will be talking about the capital project, uh, projects next week. Uh, and, uh, it will need, uh, to come with, uh, some tools. Right now, we do not really have, uh, a project, uh, management, uh, tool or a project budget tool. Our financial system does not really accommodate that, so we're gonna be working on that, uh, as a high priority between now, um, till the beginning of the year and deliver something that will be, um, helpful to, um, us and all of the other, uh, us as in Finance Department and, um, the departments across the city as well as the council. Next slide, please. And, um, today we had the, uh, we had our operating budget presentation. Uh, and, um, next week, we're planning for a capital budget presentation, uh, which I promise will not be this long. Uh, and we're also hoping, uh, are going to have, uh, first reading of the budget, uh, and a public hearing as well. Uh, on the twenty-third, uh, is kind of a, a date that we freed up, just in case you have any questions that we needed to answer, um, so that you would have, uh, about a week there, uh, to form your questions and, um, and we can get back to you. Uh, and then the seventh, uh, of December is when we would have the second reading of the budget, a public hearing and hopefully a budget adoption. Um, so that is what's to come. And unless you have any questions, this, um, would be the end of the budget presentation unless Mr. Zabel has some closing comments.
A couple of closing comments really quickly. The carryover, we, we have not been able to do that before simply because we were not in a position to do it. So I think, uh, that we're there says a lot about what Rija and her staff have been able to accomplish, uh, from a financial standpoint. And, uh, uh, Rija's already covered the schedule. So with that, I don't have anything more on operating budget. Uh, we would encourage council, if you have any questions, uh, and we did have a couple tonight, we'll follow up and get that information out to council. But please feel free to contact us and, uh, as Rija said, we have a little bit of time built into the schedule if we need to do a follow-up on the, uh, twenty-third as well.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Zabel and thank you, staff. Uh, does any council members wanna comment before we move on? It's been quite a, quite an extensive meeting and, uh, totally understand. So, would, did somebody say something? So with that, uh, I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Zabel and his staff. Uh, this, this budget, um, i- it's, it's quite extensive and it's just wonderful work that you guys have done here. Uh, as the city can see, that takes a lot of work and a lot of details into getting this done. And, uh, it took a lot of effort and you just wanna appreciate staff for all the work they've done, every, every one of you and, um, and for the great resources is that I will have with me to make sure, um, you know, it's very helpful to have whenever we, we deal with these issues and, and see what's going. and see what's going on in our city with our budget. So thank you very much. All right, let's see if we can move right along with the next agenda item, which is the fireworks display discussion. Director Radke, would you like to?
Yeah, we're having a little web production issue here. See if I try to rectify that for everyone. Okay. Close enough, it's late, we'll move on. All right, thank you, council. The item brought before you this evening is a discussion on the fireworks contract left over from the modified Grand Old Fourth of July celebration. I'll abridge my preamble here a little bit for everyone. As you recall, this was our fireworks display for the Grand Old Fourth of July due to COVID-19 restrictions. We significantly modified that to more of a virtual, remote, individual family type celebration, which included the postponement of the contracted fireworks show. At the time, we felt we could do it later in the year because we felt gathering restrictions would be decidedly different. Our hopes that the effects of the pandemic would subside and we should be able to hold the fireworks show as originally intended. Currently, we're still in phase two of the Safe Start Washington program. No large gatherings are permitted. Social distancing and mask recommendations are still in place. We do have permitted forms of gathering, including drive-in style entertainment. We did the drive-in movies. The Waterfollies did a bridge drive-in airshow over Labor Day weekend. Under these guidelines, all attendees must remain in vehicles. So with regard to the fireworks display and some of the contractual obligations we have with the vendor, we've identified two options. One would be option one would be hold the fireworks show on the last day of the calendar year on December 31st. This would be an event that staff would have to create, sort of, you know, something similar to a drive-in viewing of it. We'd still have to find the best location to accommodate a number of drive-in cars, but offers good views of the show and still yet to identify additional costs for staffing, traffic control, and advertising. Option two would really be to postpone the packaged 2020 fireworks show to our typical date of July 4th, 2021. This is a $28,000 show. We would forfeit a $7,000 deposit this year. But we would amend the vendor contract to move that money to the July 2021 event. Because of the limitations and uncertainties with option one related to the pandemic, staff is of the opinion that the value of such a display would be quite limited. Accordingly, staff recommends option two, which is to postpone the packaged event to July 4th, 2021. Really, given that the discussions around this event in July came around a city, a large-scale, city-sponsored community event, staff's really seeking consensus from council, direction, discussion on how to proceed. And I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Director Radke. And I will turn it over to the council. Anybody have any comments on some direction?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Maloney.
Yeah, I know it's late, and so I think everyone's losing their enthusiasm. But I'm honestly very supportive of the idea of seeing if we can possibly hold this sort of event. 2020 has been such a rough year that I think that we'll all be very glad to see it go. And sending it out with a bank just somehow appeals to me in such a way. I wonder if we might be able to partner with one of our, with some engaged community members. I know that there's certain, there's some various farms and such that I think they, that actually offered to host a drive-in event for the Fourth of July. And so maybe there's some options that we could, where we can have some community partners really step up to take some of the burden off the city. So if at all possible, I'd be really interested to see if we can make this happen. Mr. Radke, do we have an idea of when we would need to make a decision to even potentially pull this off? Obviously, fireworks need to be packaged, everything needs to be shipped up. I mean, best case scenario, when do we need to, when do we need to have the plans pretty well finalized?
I believe we've got a 30-day notification period to mobilize our fireworks vendor. I will confirm that with the Recreation Services Manager.
Great, so if at all possible, I'd be really interested to see if we can pull something like this off. It's just been a heck of a year. And I'd love to set some fireworks off to make sure the community has a chance to see some stuff blow up way out. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anybody else?
This is Councilmember Serrano. I see the cost estimate's $40,200. Is that pretty accurate and comprehensive?
Yeah, that's typically what's been seen with this event in conjunction. So that's all the traffic control, staffing, costs, et cetera, associated beyond the contract.
Okay, and we had something along the lines budgeted. This may be more for Mississauga. Would we have to reallocate that or where budgetary-wise, where are we? Is this going to be a hole or what?
I would have to, I'm sorry, I apologize. I do not remember this off the top of my head, so I would have to get back to you.
That's totally fine. I guess, similar to what, last thing, and then I'll be quiet. Similar to what Councilman Maloney offered, you know, he suggests we look at the community members. We may want to also consider sister cities. You know, maybe if we're going to do this, could there be value in having Kennewak and Richland and doing it even bigger and better if we're going to go this route? I mean, a true tri-cities way to celebrate as a community. That's my last thought on this. I'm open to it. And quite honestly, I'm lukewarm on it. I think there's some great value in it. I could also do without it. I mean, we're not going to get Dick Clark, and that's just disappointing.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Anybody else?
This is Councilmember Alvarado. My only idea would be to perhaps create a survey, a quick three-question survey that we put on our website and see what the community says from maybe the options. And go from there. I don't know if that's a heavy lift to pull or something that could be done very easily. If it's the latter, that would be an idea I would have, but I don't know if the council would be amenable to that. But either way, I don't have a strong meaning.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado.
This is Councilmember Milney. I would also agree with Councilman Alvarado. I'm kind of lukewarm. I do see the point of having something, but on the other hand, I just don't know if I would go out in the cold weather. And I don't know. As I said, I guess what Craig said, a whole year's been bad, I would agree with that. It would be nice to see a firework display, but on the same hand, I don't know if I would go. And I don't know, again, just kind of up in the air.
Thank you, Councilmember Milney.
This is Councilmember Alvarado again. I did have one question. If we were to say forfeit the $7,000 and would, we just got done talking about carryovers. We may not have this answer, but I would be able to carry this over for next year. Do I need a better Fourth of July? Next year?
We can find out that question for you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, anybody else? Okay. My thought is, I actually talked to a few people. As much as I, it just kills me to forfeit the $7,000. I just, if we can carry it over to next year, I think it would be safer to carry it over to next year. We've already, we missed it. We had an opportunity this summer, it didn't happen. There's just too many things that could go wrong with the weather and with people being in a car for an hour and a half. By the time it starts and by the time it ends and gets out of this area, I just, quite frankly, I'm okay if it happens. But I just, I really don't see the value in taking so much risk, especially since you have New Year's going on. I don't know what we'll be able to do at that point. And then staff's already going to be busy. It's going to be holiday seasons. And I just, I just think we lost an opportunity this summer to do it when the weather was more amenable to this type of activity. So that's my thought on it. Do you have enough information to go with or enough time? Or do you want to have a decision made for us tonight?
I can work with staff and I believe get an update back to council next week.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, then there'll be another opportunity to think about that, that one. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item. And that would be to introduce a resolution, Second Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement for Tourism Promotion Area. Mr. Zabel?
So council recalls that Michael Novakovich was here just a couple of weeks ago, and it's 10:20, and I can't even come close to the energy Michael Novakovich had at his last presentation. But I know you'll recall it. And council agreed to the TPA budget at that point in time, which relied on a $3 per night, which is a dollar increase from $2 to $3 per night lodging tax assessment. This stems from the legislature actually having approved that increase from $2 to $3. The limit, just this last session. The Second Amendment would obligate the council later by ordinance to pass an ordinance to do that, but it would obligate the council to assess that fee. And it's consistent with council's budget decision with regard to the TPA. And just wanted to alert council that, we'd like to bring that on your next meeting.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? All right, then we'll move forward with that.
Yeah, sorry, Councilman Serrano. If there are any way we can, this thing will have an expiration date on it. You know, as far as this increase, it seems a reasonable response to COVID, we need the TPA funds. But I don't know that I want to be the one to set the mark of an extra dollar a night in perpetuity.
Okay. Well, that would take, that would take the agreement of the other two cities, so we can check on that.
Yeah, if you'll just kind of pitch the idea, manager to manager, however you want to work that, Mr. Zabel, I'd appreciate that.
Great, we'll do it.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. All right, and then the last item on the agenda would be for Mr. Warley to introduce resolution with the Washington State Department of Natural Resources easement for Columbia East Forest, Maine. Mr. Warley?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, I'm going to turn this item over to our CIP manager, Maria Sarah.
Good evening, Maria.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So I'm going to be so brief. What we are presenting to you is a resolution for approval of easement acquisitions for the installation of a forest main along DNR property that is on the east side of the city. And the easement is proposed for the installation of a forest main that would convey wastewater from processors to our PWRF. The easements are 30 feet in width, and they extend through the south and west side, west property lines of the parcel. There is a permanent easement and a temporary easement. DNR and the city have been coordinating on the granting of the easement for quite a while now. We had an agreement signed where DNR expressed their willingness to provide the easement and also establish some conditions for said easement. At this point, we have provided an offer based on our appraisal. And they have provided a counteroffer. We have reviewed the counteroffer, which was supported by their own third-party appraisal. And we found it to be adequate, and so we recommend approval.
Thank you, Maria, appreciate that. Anybody else? Anybody have a comment or question on the proposal?
Yes, Councilmember Maloney, just really briefly. There was a, I had a pretty big concern about liability in case there's a unilateral ability for the state to change their mind about use of land, and that would transfer all costs for relocation and land onto the city. So that, of course, frustrates the heck out of me, but I don't think we're going to be able to win that argument with the state. So I'm going to cross my fingers and hope that we're not moving this line, you know, five, 10 years from now at their own expense. So I hope in that case, we can perhaps challenge the use of the land and perhaps even have an influence over the design of whatever use of the lands. We can avoid that. But anyways, I just want to let y'all know that there's, that Mr. Warley and staff were able to provide a very thorough response as to having dug really deep into that one. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney.
I don't know if this Councilmember Maloney, but with regard to the relocation of that easement, it did indicate there that that could occur at the request of the state, but that would only be in instances where that was necessary because there was interference with the use and development of the easement area. So it wasn't, it is qualified to some extent.
Okay. All right, so if there's no more questions. I do have another one. Wouldn't Mr. Warley or Maria, the cost of this, is it coming from the processing plants?
This is a project cost, and so it will be charged to the project. We still have work to do to determine how the project cost will be divvied up between any of the processors that are using the facility. And those details have not been worked out yet.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Then we can put that on the agenda for next week and move forward. All right, well, thank you very much, everyone. We go to the next item, miscellaneous council discussion. Mr. Zabel, do you have anything?
Two quick things, and they're worth it. Peanuts Park went out to bid last week, and Lewis Street goes out to bid tomorrow. Lewis Street Overpass tomorrow. So two great projects for our downtown. Thank you to Steve and Marie and the Public Works staff for getting those at the door.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that. Any other miscellaneous discussion from council? And I don't think there's an executive session for tonight. So with that, council, thank you very much for enduring this meeting. And for the city, any other city members that are out there watching, it's a lot of work, and we appreciate all the work that's done with, you know, from the city staff and the manager. And thank you, council, for enduring once again. So with that, it is 10:27, and we will see you next week. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.